Let me know when you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good evening, Littleton, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, March 22nd. We're going to begin this evening's meeting with Executive Session. We will be returning to open session after we resume our normal meeting at 6:30 PM. So, good time being, we're going to return to Executive Session. I can have a motion, please?
Move that the Select Board vote to enter to Executive Session pursuant to match to launch chapter 38, section 21A, clause 3, to discuss what respect collective bargaining with the towns union pursuant to match to launch chapter 38, section 21A, clause 6, acquisition of properties in the open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the board, can it be an open session thereafter? Second?
Motion made in second, and all those in favor? Mr. Nordhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Knox?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoste?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. So, the board will now resume Executive Session and will be returning to open session at 6:30 PM. Thank you. Okay, so maybe we'll just get started. I know we're already running late. So, good evening, Littleton, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, March 22nd, 2021. We're going to start off our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. So, we're going to begin tonight's meeting with organization and reading of the mail. That will be followed by an Eagle Scout candidate, Brendan Lavoy, Eagle Project presentation. That will be followed by Department Board updates and requests. We have a conservation coordinator, Town Forest and Higurt Property Trails Conservation Coordinator License Agreement from a Gynets.
Fragmites.
Thank you. Management 145 to Hadawan and Police Department Motor Vehicle Policy Change. We have a public hearing that we're already late for that was scheduled for 7:00 PM. There was actually a continuation of, oh, actually, this is a new public hearing on the Great Road Liquors, Inc., change of location from 326 Great Road to 312 Great Road. That will be followed by public input and members' updates. We have a public hearing. It's a continuation of our hearing from March 8th, 2020, 2021, request to purchase town or land Manchester Drive lots U 14-101 and U 14-102. At 7:45, we're scheduled to have a joint meeting with the Finance Committee, a presentation of the fiscal year 20 audit report by Melanson CPAs and the Finance Committee Reserve Fund Policy. At 8:15, we're scheduled to have a Select Board discussion regarding senior tax exemptions and an act further providing for early voting by mail signed into law. That will be followed by annual special town meeting warrant for June 12th, 2021, Amazon Funds Article Language and Personnel Bylaw and Employee Handbook update. Then we will have an update from the Town Administrator and Assistant Town Administrator regarding five items. The first is an intermunicipal agreement, IMA, with Boxborough for LCTV, an extension to premises for outside dining services, signs on Littleton Common for graduation, Fire Chief Scott Wazinski employment contract, and then Nagog Hill Orchard Authorization to Negotiate Lees. That will be followed by meeting minutes, and then our meeting will adjourn. So, I'm going to take some items out of order if the board is agreeable. With respect to the reading of the mail, Mr. Insaldi, maybe we could do that towards the end of the meeting, just because we are running far behind.
Sure.
I do have a request. I'd like to take item four, A, B, and C, prior to the presentation by Eagle Scout candidate, Brendan Lavoy, just because members on, employees who are scheduled to participate in the meeting and address, talk about items four, A, B, and C, have other meetings that they need to attend. So, if the board's agreeable to that, I'd like to take item four, A, B, and C ahead of item three. So, if we could start with item A, Conservation Coordinator, Town Forest and Hergate Property Trails. Amy's on the call.
Yep, she's on her way in.
Excellent. Hi, Amy.
Hi, good evening. So, you would like me to jump in here?
Yeah.
So, thanks for your time. We sort of have two things going on with regard to the Town Forest and the Hergate property. You'll hear more detail from the scout when he comes on, but just as a setup, we are looking to establish trails in about the 70 acres of Town Forest where there really haven't been trails, certainly not in the recent. And part of what has spurred this is both the purchase of Brown's Woods, which is across the street, as well as the development of Durkey and Kay, who will have an easement leading from Town Forest into their neighborhood. So, we have the scout willing to do it. Now, both build the trail, not the boardwalks if needed. Excuse me, and both, all of the Town Forest parcels, as well as the Hergate parcels, are owned by the town, not by the Conservation Commission. So, both the Conservation Commission, because we'll be building an extra trail that could ultimately link over to Glavy if that happens, or form a big loop, the red trail, as well as the yellow trail, which the scout is going to build, we would need your approval for, or your blessing for.
Okay. Great, thank you. Any questions from the board on that proposal? Okay, so we have a motion?
Let me find that, Madam Chair.
Okay.
We're under, what, 4-1? Is that what that is?
Yeah, we're going with 4A. We've taken some items out of order.
All right, thank you, Anthony, because I can't find it immediately. I would move that the Select Board vote to authorize the construction of trails on Town Forest Parcels R 07-3-0, R 07-4-0, R 07-6-0, R 07-8-0, R 07-9-0, R 08-10-0, and the Hergate parcel, R 08-9-3.
Second?
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor? Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
Mr. DeCoste is aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye, and the motion is approved as written. And now, we're on to item 4B. License Agreement.
If I may, yep, that's me again. This would be also for the Brown's Woods property at one corner is a Fragmites Swamp, that being a large invasive, very problematic species. And as part of the grant that we have, the MVP grant we have with the state, they agreed to pay their 75% of controlling, getting rid of the Fragmites. Now, unfortunately, a large part, about maybe half or a third of the stand is on 145 to Hadawan Road, and if we treat just the town property, it's just going to come right back in and continue to threaten Brown's Woods, as well as Long Lake, which is immediately downstream. So, we spoke, has spoken with the Shays, who live at 145, and they are interested in agreeable in having this whole Fragmites area being taken care of at the same time. The first step would be, which would be to come into a license agreement with them. I'm not sure if they're here tonight. They have seen what is written up by Town Council and said it looks good to them. So, we're just looking for the Select Board to approve and sign as well.
Okay. Are they on the call, Mr. Leyden? Anybody else on the call relative to this agreement?
Uh, no.
Okay. All right, perfect. So, any questions from the board?
I'm sorry, is this, is this in the packet? I couldn't find item four at all.
No, not my packet. No.
No, actually, I was just, this is Joe, I was actually just going through, and item four does not appear to be in the packet. I can screen share the material that should have been there. My apologies, it clearly had a IT issue with assembling the PDF.
I guess I don't necessarily have any objection to this. I just don't know if there's any other information that I'm missing as far as supporting documentation or, you know, anything else.
On similar lines, could perhaps, Joe, you or Amy summarize a little bit more of what we didn't get in our packet that was provided?
I can give a shot at, Joe. There's my memo on the front.
Yeah.
There's a two-page access license. So, in the memo, I just summarized what the grant was and why we're doing this. And then, there's the two-page access license, which, as far as I can tell, in discussions with town councils, pretty close to boilerplate, and it would be for three years of access. And then, the, actually, I guess it's a four-page license agreement, access agreement. And then, at the end of it, is the actual proposal that the consultant has put in, and actually, which we just signed a contract for. And I am hoping to submit the notice of intent with the Conservation Commission next week, so we can get the permit for all this as well.
So, and the last, the last page of that, let me just share that. The last page is the area. So, this area on the map that should have had the, there's a property line that basically comes in, right in here. So, within these areas ends up being the Fragmites and part of what would be removed. So, because it spans both property lines, as Amy said, we really can't remove it from the town parcel and not remove it from the Butters parcel. It would just come back, and that, when the MVP grant was prepared, again, Amy had the forethought to recognize that the Fragmites needed to be removed on both parcels, and this license agreement that was the mechanism that we had been working with Town Council was the means to allow for that removal and remediation work to occur.
Great, thank you, Joe. Any other questions from the board?
Who is going to do the removal?
The company is called Land Stewardship, Inc., who's owned and run by Chris Palatin, who has been doing this for a really long time.
Out of Turner Falls.
What'd you say, Chuck?
Just out of Turner Falls, I believe, right?
Uh, yeah, yep.
Thank you. The motion back up, Joe. Or Anthony, thank you. You ready for the motion, Madam Chair?
Please.
Okay, I move that the Select Board vote to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the access license with Stanley A. Shea and Susan M. Shea of 145 to Hadawan Road, Littleton, Massachusetts, for the purpose of gaining access to management, to manage Fragmites, and to sign the notice of intent application for the removal of Fragmites from town land at 119 to Hadawan Road.
Second?
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor? Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
DeCoste is aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye, and the motion is approved as written. Great, thank you, Amy.
Thank you. Look at that, 7:26, I got four minutes.
Perfect.
We need it, though.
Okay, so next on the agenda, we're going to go with 4C, Police Department Motor Vehicle Policy Change. Do we have, I see we have Chief Pennard on the call with us.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am, how are you?
Good, how are you?
The, if you recall, in the past, I have put several policies forward in front of you. Normally, what we had done is I send them to the board, and the board would approve. If the board had no questions in regards to them, after 30 days of sending them to you and having you read them, they would automatically go into effect. After a long discussion with Town Administrator Insaldi, we thought with police reform and a lot of these policies and wording that are going to be changed, we thought it'd be a good idea just to make sure that we actually put them on the agenda and vote on it. I think it's probably better that way, that way it's out there. There is going to be several more policies following this one with some wording changes. Again, they're very minor changes, but they're all being vetted by the DA's office and also Accreditation Council. So, tonight, you have the tow policy, tow and inventory search policy in front of you.
Okay. Mr. Leyen, could you screen share that? Because I'm not seeing that before me.
Same thing, we don't have that either.
Right, so this is, let me pull that, pull that up. The board had received it by email back on March 8th, and and so, this was the motor vehicle inventory and towing policy. The highlighted green, yellow areas are the areas that the chief had proposed to amend, you know, recognizing that this was it, not in the packet, you know, that the, that the board is at a disadvantage as far as not having been able to see this for tonight.
When you say, so the language that's highlighted in yellow is an amendment? Or is it an addition? Is it new language?
It's, the highlighted language is what you'll see is actually for accreditation purposes and references the actual accreditation policy that we're following and guidelines of.
Okay.
Again, these are brought to us by the DA's office after the police reform bill passed to make sure that we're putting best practices forward.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
And the yellows, the yellow highlighted items are changed from the old policy. Is that accurate?
That's not accurate. The yellow, in some areas, are what we needed for accreditation purposes. That's why they're highlighted, but there are some changes in yellow as well. You'll see like abandoned and public property that are on there in front of you. Those are added, and then some minor language in the back, I can't scroll up, sorry, on the others, on the lines. Like I said, there's very minimal changes to what we have in place right now. If you, if you would like, we can actually send it, resend it out to you, both policies, so you can look at both of them. But again, they were vetted by the DA's office and the Accreditation Commission.
Okay. And Chief Pennard, you indicated that there's going to be other policy changes coming before the board for consideration?
That is correct. Again, they're going to be minor changes, but we want to do the best practices for our department, our community.
Okay. So, is this change in a time sensitive, or would it be more, would it be better to bring them all together before the board at once?
I don't think that would be great, because like I said, there's probably going to be quite a few of them coming down the line. But I, like I said, I don't think it'll be 20 or 30. I think it'll be minor changes here and there as it comes down from the DA's office. So, if you want, I'll keep doing it the way we have, or if you, if the board was so wish to choose, I can save them all until we have them in place and do it all at the same time.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure what the timeframe was. If you have like another batch that you are actively working on, or you think they're just going to come intermittently as they come down, changes come down from the DA's office?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct.
Okay. So, does the board want to act on this tonight, or would you prefer to sit back and take another look at it?
I'd probably just act. I thought we had a kind of like a understanding that if Matt felt as though these were appropriate, to his point, I think he mentioned at the beginning of this part, he would give it to us, we'd kind of review it for 30 days, and if we didn't have any opposition to it, it would just be enacted. So, I appreciate it being in front of us and giving us the opportunity to review it, but I'm not sure that, I mean, I trust him, and if it's coming through the VA, and, you know, it's been vetted this many times, I don't know that it needs to be in front of us.
Plus, this was emailed to us about a week ago.
Right.
Yep.
I'm fine with acting tonight.
Yeah, I was just.
I am as well. I think the only error here was it wasn't in our packet where it could be readily accessible, and, you know, as Chuck and Matthew just pointed out, we did have a shot at looking at this earlier prior to the packet, correct? The same information?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, perfect, good. Excellent, so we have a motion?
Oh, I don't, somebody puts one up.
Nope.
All right, let me.
Leyen's in hot seat tonight.
Okay.
All right, here we go.
And I will move that the Select Board vote to approve the amended motor vehicle inventory tow policy as proposed by Police Chief Matthew Pennard, recent birthday celebration.
Second? Happy birthday.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor? Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
I think all of us answering aye on the St. Patrick's Day birthday.
Hey.
Cindy Napoli is aye, and the motion is approved as written. Excellent, thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thanks, you too. Okay, so next, we're going to go back to item 3A. We have Eagle Scout candidate Brendan Lavoy. He's going to do a presentation of his Eagle Scout project, and I appreciate his patience. I know we're running a little bit behind.
All right, hello, everyone.
Good evening, Brandon.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me. If you don't mind, I have my own presentation I'd like to share.
Please.
Let me pull this up here. All right, that's coming through, right?
It is.
Yes.
All right, thank you. So, if you don't mind, I'll start. So, my name is Brandon Lavoy. I am a current life scout in Troop 20 Littleton, and I'm going for you today in town to present my project proposal for my Eagle Scout. For the approval. So, to start, I've been in, so I've been a life scout for three years, and I've been on my Eagle journey for the same amount of time. And this year, I had some luck. I went, a little bit of background, I went hiking earlier this year near my house on some trails, and they, they were pretty rough. And that night, I sent out on the Conservation Commission, Conservation Trust, actually, website, I filled out a form and sent it in saying, hey, I have this idea, I'm an Eagle Scout, and I need a project. Mrs., so, Mrs. Amy Green responded to me almost immediately and said that, well, the town is going to control their maintenance of their trails, but they had, she had this other idea. She put me in contact with Jim O'Neil and Rick Finlay. They're on the slide, are you? They, they all had this idea of a trail. So, Littleton Town Forest is by Harwood Avenue, there's a sign, also have a seen Eagle Scout project much before my time. And they had this idea of building a trail through there, something that's never been done before, and something that has been on the list to complete, and something that has been very desired. So, this trail is, will be running from Harwood Avenue to the Littleton Town Forest by the sign, stinking through the woods to the edge of the Durkey Farm Estates by Red Cedar Road and Douglas Road. This is all through town land, going from town border to town border, all owned by the town property. The, the blue line you see in front of you here is the trail that I will be doing. I know that Ms. Green mentioned before in her map that it is yellow. The, this is a picture, this is an earlier picture, so coloration may differ, but long trail is the one I'll be doing. The red line is the easement she mentioned, which is where the Durkey and Kay state property owners will be making their path to meet the town border, Town Forest border. So, this is all about, it's around three quarters of mile to a mile in distance, depending on, you know, fallen trees such, and about four or six feet wide. I'll come for you today to ask for approval. I have two main questions, first of which is, as the governing body and ownership of town land, will the Select Board grant permission for this project? That's first, and the second is, as project, technical project beneficiary, who would the Select Board appoint as a representative for this project? My suggestions would be Amy Green or Matthew Nordhaus. That's my short bit for this. Move on to, before we go answering these questions, do any of the members of the board have questions of their own about this project?
Great, thank you, Brandon. Excellent presentation. Are there any questions for Mr. Lavoy, for members of the board? Mr. Glavy?
Hi, thank you very much, Brandon. My nephew, actually, Jared Warre, a couple of years ago, was on the track you are on right now, and I appreciate what a workload it is and what an honor it is for what you're working towards. And the particular project you're involved with, with the Town Forest, and given the properties that are at the Butts and is nearby, near and dear to me, you might have heard earlier, Amy Green had mentioned that we've got some very strong prospects for additional trails that would potentially log into the proposed trail network that you're talking about at the Town Forest with some of the land just up Harwood Avenue. And I just want to recommend that you stay apprised of what other opportunities there are as you lay out your trail system. Hopefully, will give you a whole other network to tie into in the not-too-distant future, and it really would realize so much more accessibility to some great land, a lot of it wet. I've walked a lot out there, both Town Forest and some of the currently private land, but it'd be great to tie in potentially hundreds and hundreds of acres through what you're proposing to do and a couple of other connections, so terrific.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leyen.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Sure.
I first met Brandon when he and my son were twirpy kindergarteners, and then I spent about six years as an assistant scout master with him in Troop 20, and it's been my pleasure and my honor to watch him turn into a young man and a leader. And he really, I think, takes the service mission of the scouts to heart. He was also responsible for rehabbing the flagpole at 300 King Street a few years ago with Troop 20. So, I really think this is a great project. I think this trail is, as Mr. Glavy mentioned, one of the final links in a chain with the Brown property. You know, we will be able to hike from the lake to the train station. It's been decades in the making to like put that, those links together, and it's really, I think, fantastic that an Eagle Scout project is one of the parts of it. So, I am obviously in favor of it, and I would love, I would be honored to be the beneficiary representative, and I hope I can help you build it.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nordhaus.
Mr. DeCoste?
Yeah, I echo with what my colleagues have said. We've been the beneficiary of a number of Eagle Scout projects, and it's very much appreciated. I appreciate you guys not only committing to service, but also committing to community and giving back to your community. I, I don't recall in the past a beneficiary representative, but certainly, if you're requesting, I would say if Amy and Matthew are each willing, that that would be something I'd be supportive of and to echo what Matthew said, that if you need anything from, you know, some pretty inexpensive labor, I think there's a few of us would be willing to come by and help out. Good luck, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeCoste.
Mr. Knox?
Brandon, I just want to thank you, undertaking such a big project, that's going to be an awful long trail that you're making, and it'll benefit very, very many people, and I want to thank you for taking this on.
Thank you. I echo the comments of my fellow board members. I'm excited about this project. It's right down the street from my house, so I'm very much looking forward to seeing it. So I'm very much looking forward to seeing it, it move forward. It's an excellent idea, Brandon. So thank you so much for bringing this, um, forward on behalf of the town of Littleton. Um, certainly, uh, as far as suggested project beneficiary, I'd love to see maybe, um, Amy Green and Matthew, um, help, uh, be the represented, representatives, um, to work with you on this project. Um, just to give you as much support as you need, um, to, to move this forward. So, um, I don't know if you're agreeable to that, if that would work for you or?
Um, well, I just, I'll make your comments first. Um, if I do a few more things to elaborate, it helps clarify if there's any other questions and, um, are you all set for me to, uh, finish, to mention one more thing?
Sure.
All right. So why I, I have that second question on there and thank you all for your input. I am greatly appreciated and that actually lifts a lot of weight off my shoulders. Okay? Um, the reason I have up there is because due to the scouting process, there is obviously paperwork and usually you go to, say, if you're doing a project, the flower beds for church, usually it's like you go to a person and ask and the project beneficiary signs off. It's, you know, the minister at the church. Well, in this case, I'm doing it technically for the Conservation Commission and as in, you know, the same green and so, and such. But since it's town-owned land, you as a select board is the, is the owner. So therefore according to scouting, you're the beneficiary. But a, a whole board of like five men, members can't fit on one signature slot to sign as the beneficiary. So, what, of, of course, I'm more than willing to have Ms. Amy Green's been working closely with the project and as Mr. Nordhouse mentioned, he knows me very well. He's close and he's familiar with the scouting processes for a while and, you know, he would know who to ask and who to contact, clarify questions. Everyone. But, um, I just, I want to, I'm interested in who this, the board would be interested in pointing as a person to put their John Hancock on my paperwork.
Okay.
Uh, uh, so to speak. And, and, cause it's, it's not just on the proposal to it. They have to be the one at the very end of the whole project to sign and say, yes, Brandon completed all of the work required or-
Okay.
So I just, I mean, I want to make sure that, um, I want to make it official, not just a word of mouth saying we'll do it and then, if that makes sense.
Town administrator might be there. If, 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 if it's looking for an official signature, it might be the town administrator. We empower the town administrator, but we, or certainly we could, if there's no way to put two signatures on there, um, you know, we can delegate Matthew, the, uh, the signator or like I said, the town administrator. It might be the appropriate person because, um, he is representative of the whole town, but.
Right.
Um, if you have, uh, if you have a question whether you can put two or not, um, I do have, I send an email, I copied people to Mr. Leyden mentioning that I have both my project coach, um, Mr. Peter Cipriano, my scout master, Mr. Dan Kane are on the meeting. If you have any questions about the scouting process, they're the experts. So if you see them in there and you have a question, feel free to promote them to the presenter. I, I've asked them beforehand if you need it.
Okay.
But could I suggest we, um, agree that someone will be the official signatory? And we can decide who that is offline rather than working it out here?
Yeah.
But that, but no matter what, Brandon, we will, I guarantee you that one of us, whether it's Anthony or me or Amy, will be the official signatory on this.
Right. Yeah.
Thank you very much. That's-
Yep.
Yeah, we, we've got a motion that doesn't speak to that issue, but that, uh, I think I'm in agreement with everyone else that it's not necessary. We can sort that one out easy enough. Matthew can, you know, bird dog it and Amy's obviously the staff contact, but at the end of the day, it, you know, as is past custom on property issues, it may well be the town administrator who signs it on behalf of the board, but that doesn't, that doesn't preclude the input of Matthew or Amy to the process prior to that.
Right.
You ready for the motion, Madam Chair?
Please.
Okay. And board, I guess. Um, I know that's what I've got. Um, okay. So I will move that the select board vote to grant permission to Eagle Scout candidate Brandon Lavoy for his Littleton Town Forest Trail Project, which will provide hiking trails for the community. The project will entail cutting and blazing the initial trail running from the Derkey Farm Estates through Littleton Town Forest and ending at Harwood Avenue. Said permission is subject to approval and permitting by the Conservation Commission.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, Mr. Knox? Mr. DeCoste?
DeCoste is aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhouse?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. The motion is approved as written. Thank you very much, Brandon. Best of luck.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. I'll speak to you all then.
Well done. Thank you. So we were scheduled to have a public hearing at seven, Mr. Anzaldi.
Yes, we have, excuse me, uh, public hearing for Great Road Liquors, a change of location from 326 Great Road to 312 Great Road, just across the street.
We need that hearing notice, uh, red for the record?
Please.
Just across the parking lot, right? Not the street.
Uh, okay. Notice of hearing Littleton Select Board change of location, Great Road Liquors, Inc. Littleton Select Board will conduct a public hearing on Monday, March 22nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM to, or thereafter to act under the request under MGL Chapter 138, Section 15 from Great Road Liquors, Inc., Dominic Seven, Jr., Licensed Manager for a change of location from 326 Great Road to 312 Great Road, Littleton, Mass. 01460. Due to COVID-19, public attendance for the hearing is public, is currently restricted. The public hearing will be held remotely via Zoom video conferencing. Details to be made available on the Select Board Agenda when posted, a minimum of 48 hours prior to the board's March 22nd, 2021 meeting. In addition, the public hearing can be viewed live on LCTV or online at, uh, littleton.vod. Feel free to contact the Select Board Town Administrator Officer within the office with any questions. Interested parties are encouraged to attend remotely or to submit written comments to Littleton Administrator, Town Administrator, 37 Chatty Street, Littleton, Mass. Email address, selectboard@littletonma.org by 12 noon on Wednesday, March 17th, 2021, or in person at the hearing. And with that, I would make a motion that we open the hearing.
Second?
Motion to open the hearings been made and seconded. All those in favor, Mr. Knox? He was muted. I'm sorry, Joe. Mr. Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhouse?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
DeCoste is aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. So the motion, uh, the hearing is now open. And so I see, um,
The applicant is, is on. They unmute themselves. Sherry?
There we go. And there's, hi.
Hi.
Good evening. Good evening. Uh, this is Sherry Gould, attorney, and I'm here with Dominic Seven, Jr., the owner of the Great Road Liquors in Littleton, also my husband. Uh, Dominic seeks, uh, to have the store moved from where it is at 326 Great Road across the parking lot to 312 Great Road. And I'll let him do the talking because he's much handsomer than I.
I'm older too.
We knew that.
Yeah.
Good evening, Dom.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Did you want to? So you're going to be moving your business across the parking lot?
Correct. From, uh, I think it's 14,000 square feet. Or 1,400 square feet, I'm sorry, down to 1,200 square feet.
Okay.
Um, little better place, better atmosphere. It's going to be a lot newer, uh, with all the equipment and everything. And, uh, I have a new landlord who I know quite well, as you all know. And that's probably one of the reasons.
All right, great. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Well, the obvious one, Dom, because of your new landlord and the prospective lease you, you've signed, does that mean the prices are going to be going up or, uh?
I know the rent's going up, but I, I will keep the price the same.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you, uh, he performs a great public service there six months ago and, uh, many package stores are telling me it couldn't be done and, uh, nostalgia drove me to want to locate, uh, Schlitz and Bottles. Dom found it for me and, uh,
Yeah, I did.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Want to know why Paul didn't share his Schlitz.
The next, next case, I'll be happy to do that.
No, I think this is great. It's just, it's taking, um, I mean, I, I think there's some opportunity to, where Bradley has moved down to the Avishan Plaza. Um, it's filling a vacant space and I think M and M probably has some plans for backfilling where you vacate, Dominic. So it's just, uh, you know, from an economic development standpoint, it's, it's, it's filling up one of the empty storefronts that we have. So, um, I think it's, it makes sense. And if it works well for you, you've demonstrated you're a good corporate citizen and we're, I'm happy to support it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a great location too. I know the building very well. The, where he's putting his coolers, where my desk uses it.
It might go back there now that the cooler's down, Joe. Productivity might go down.
Mr. Nordhouse?
I just want to say on the corporate citizen front, um, I really appreciate after the community cleanup a few years ago that you collected all those NIPs bottles because my estimate was that about 142% of what we picked up were NIP bottles around the sides of the road. So I really appreciate you doing that and I think it made a big difference.
And we're gonna, thank you. And, and we are gonna institute it again.
Fantastic. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Okay, we ready for a motion?
Uh, Madam Chair, should we ask to see if there's any members of the public that wish to speak to this first?
Thank you, Mr. Glavy. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak, Mr. Leyden?
Uh, Madam Chair, currently there are no hands raised.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Well, then my first motion then would be to close the hearing.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded to close the hearing. Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
Mr. DeCoste is aye.
Mr. Nordhouse?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. The hearing is now closed.
Okay, assuming there's no other further deliberation, I'd make a further motion, Madam Chair?
Please.
Okay. Move that the, uh, it says Board of Select here, but that's inaccurate. It's the Select Board. Uh, vote pursuant to MGL Chapter 138 to approve the application of Great Road Liquors, Inc. to change its location from 326 Great Road to 312 Great Road and to so notify the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
DeCoste is aye.
Mr. Nordhouse?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. And the motion is approved as written. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Very welcome. See you soon.
Okay.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have, uh, public input and members' updates. Do we have any public, anyone for public input, Mr. Leyden?
Uh, Madam Chair, currently we do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. Do we have, um, members' updates? Uh, Mr., I'll start with Mr. Knox.
Uh, nothing right now. Thank you.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
Uh, yes, I just a couple of things I wanted to touch based on, uh, the Economic Development Committee is, um, we are running a little bit light on membership. So I just wanted to kind of put a, a public service announcement and ask for anybody that's interested in economic development and, and, uh, building the business community within Littleton and attracting businesses to Littleton to please, um, reach out to the Select Board Office, uh, to the Town Administrator's Office. And, um, if you want to reach out to me and ask questions about it and what the commitment is and that kind of thing. Caroline Armstrong is the, uh, the chair of the committee and the, the members that we have are really, uh, dynamic folks and they're, they're excited about, um, helping to do the, the, the charge of the EDC, which is to, uh, promote and, um, attract, retain, uh, businesses in Littleton. So, um, that along with the last January, um, we had established a, so that's the economic development part aside. Last January, we had established a, um, common, Littleton Common Revitalization Committee, um, which was made up of different, different representatives from different, um, committees and, and boards in town. And we had one meeting, we organized, we, um, and then COVID hit and we, we haven't been able to have another meeting and some of the folks that were on, that were representative of, of the different boards and commissions, um, are no longer on those boards and commissions. So looking to bring that back and, um, in, to dovetail that with the, the original charge of, uh, helping to work with the promotion of the town sewer and economic development and things like Northern Bank of Trust and, um, you know, some of the, some of the projects that are going around, around town, um, Form Based Code, working with Planning Board and Zoning Board Water Department and Sewer, the Sewer Working Group. So, uh, those are some things that, um, Economic Development Committee, we're looking for some, some people that are excited about, uh, helping out and it's a great way to kind of put your toe in the water, um, volunteering for the town. But, um, the Littleton Common Revital, the Revitalization Commission is being, uh, re-engaged and, uh, be on the lookout for us to be, um, connecting on that and trying to help propagate what we're, what we're trying to get done in town.
Is the Littleton Common Revitalization Committee the same as Littleton Common Committee?
No.
It's separate. Cause we had made an appointment, I think, to somebody to the Littleton Common Committee in the spring.
Yeah, it's been, um,
Or in the fall.
I think, yeah, I think you're right. I think it was last spring.
Right.
Right. But it, it's a relatively inactive border committee as well. So part of the hope of, um, Laurie Yates, who serves with you on the MPIC, Cindy, on the Master Plan Implementation Committee, Laurie Yates, um, has been, she just kind of poked me in the ribs and said, hey, what's going on with this?
Right.
So, uh, so which I appreciated and, and, um, you know, with, with COVID and everything else, we've, we've been kind of, you know, trying to make, you know, keep all the balls in the air. And, um, that's one that I think is an important one to keep in the air. So, um, I think through us revitalizing the Revitalization Committee or, or re-engaging, um, we might be able to spark a little bit of a fire under the, uh, the Littleton Common Committee, um, to, to kind of do what they were charged with doing because they haven't met in some time either.
Right. Do you think they're redundant though, Chuck? Do you think we should just combine them?
Um, the charges are slightly different. The purpose of the Revitalization Commission, when we put it together last January, was very much focused on, uh, Form Based Code and, um, Master Plan Implementation and Sewering of the Common and, and-
Right.
area. So, um, that was, and it was, it was more about people that were in, um, to, to get a collaboration between the Water Department, the Sewer Working Group, Planning Board, uh, Economic Development Committee, uh, the Select Board and to try to make sure that we were all kind of marching in the same direction and, and, you know, kind of singing from the same hymnal. So that is more at a commission or department level, whereas I think the Littleton Common Committee, I think the charge was more about beautification and opportunities to, you know, the, not to mention the cleanup and, you know, Dominic's been, uh, you know, Dominic Seven, the previous applicant, um, has been, you know, kind of engaged in that. So I think there's some opportunity for that committee to be revitalized. Uh, I should stop using that word, um, to be, you know, brought back to life, um, to see if there is redundancy. But it's more of a, um, um, public at large committee than the Revitalization Commission.
Okay, I see. Okay.
So, and that the time will tell. I mean, it might, it might just turn out that those folks that, uh, are, or have been on Littleton Common Committee just don't have the bandwidth anymore or just don't see.
I don't. Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll talk up, let's revisit that offline. Cause I, I know there was some, the Littleton Common Committee had been dormant for a while. We did recently appoint one or two people. But I was thinking more, would they be interested in helping with Economic Development Committee? But we can have, let's have that conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Um, all right, good. Mr. Nordhouse?
Thank you.
Uh, yes, thank you very much. Um, over the weekend, I attended the Massachusetts and Rhode Island Land Conservation Conference. Um, and there was an excellent forum on municipalities partnering with conservation organizations to address affordable housing. Um, and other communities in Massachusetts have created very successful partnerships, um, with concert, with conservation groups. Um, and I, I'm currently working on a proposal, uh, to form a working group. I think that we could integrate the, uh, master plan goals, the open space and recreation plan, uh, another, another committee which seems to be defunct at this time. Um, and maybe the upcoming searing districts and- Um, and maybe the upcoming searing districts and get a, you know, an overarching holistic view of the areas in town, which would be priorities for conservation, priorities for development and/or affordable housing. So I, I'm planning on having a more comprehensive proposal in the next week or so for the Select Board to review. Uh, but it was, it was a fascinating discussion by someone on the Association to Preserve Cape Cod, who has done a, like, uh, they, they're in the middle of a huge evaluation of, you know, every square meter of Cape Cod in 30 acre increments. And I, I don't think that's feasible for Littleton, but the principle behind it of identifying areas of high priority for these two different areas is, is a very good one. And it's something that, to my knowledge, hasn't been done, um, in any detail in Littleton.
Great, thank you. Um, so that's excellent that you attended that seminar. There's actually, it's a report and I don't know if it's the Open Space and Recreation Report, but there was a report done by the state that identified primary, um, priority preservation areas, PPAs and priority development areas um, in the town of Littleton specifically. And it's interesting in that report because unfortunately, some of the areas that the state identified for the town of Littleton as priority preservation, we've actually lost to development. Um, so I'll try to pull out that report and it might be part of the Open Space and Recreation Plan, but it might be part of a totally separate report, but the state has done, um, that kind of analysis on the town of Littleton. So I'll definitely share that with you. I think you'll find it interesting.
Thank you. Yeah.
It's definitely, you know, something that we should, and that report was done a while ago, Matthew. So it's definitely something, it'd be interesting, first of all, to see if the state's updated it somewhere. Um, that information's been, you know, updated in some form, but also to revisit that. Um, absolutely. So I think what you're talking about is really interesting. That's, it's going to be, um, thank you for looking into that.
Yeah, I did, I did find the open space, it was from 2016, the Open Space and Recreation Plan. It was a seven-year plan. Um, and I didn't see any priority development in there. But, but it's entirely possible there's another report on the town website somewhere that I haven't found.
Yeah.
I, I would be very interested to see that information. And then I still think there'd be value in like re, and looking at it with, with the current state of where the land is now. In addition to involving, you know, the Water Commissioners to talk about what's close to searing and CONSCOM and everybody else who's, who's got a, all the shareholders, basically.
Yeah.
And all on the same page.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a great idea. I'll, I'll find that report.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Um,
Madam Chair, um, if I could just interject, um, I'll also look because, um, uh, I was working in Metro West, um, when MABC was doing the priority, uh, preservation, priority development efforts. Um, those were, uh, regional efforts primarily, uh, done through the RPAs for each region. Um, and there definitely should be links as well. So I'll also look and send that off to the board as well.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Leyden. Um, so the only thing that I was, I wanted to just talk quickly about the Planning Board, um, public hearing that took place regarding Littleton Station last week. There was a lot of people on that call, which was great to see the town engaged, um, in learning more about that project. And I know that there's going to be some, um, additional meetings coming forward on that. So I appreciate residents, um, who participated in, in that public hearing and, um, offered their comments and, uh, suggestions and concerns um, about that project. I think it's important to have that dialogue. So I was, it was nice to see, um, the community engaged with that. Um, the other thing on, uh, to Chuck's point about economic development, I did want to, I'm happy that he put out, um, the call for more, um, membership to the Economic Development Committee. I think it's really important that we revitalize that committee in some form. Um, one of the things I did want to talk about with the board is maybe having an economic, um, summit and maybe bringing in some of the, uh, prop, you know, business owners in town and just, um, hearing from them what's going on with their businesses. How have they been impacted by the pandemic? What can we as a town do to help them? Um, and maybe that would be a great, um, way to revitalize the Economic Development Committee is maybe hearing from the business owners in town. Um, and just seeing if we can have that dialogue and maybe give the Economic Development Committee some, um, some direction. So if that's something the board, uh, would be agreeable to, I think, I, you know, I think it would be great to arrange something like that. So I could certainly work with Chuck on that as, um, a member of the Economic Development Committee, if that's okay with the board.
And as a, a former, uh, member of the committee representing the board and, uh, I, I just say that the last time that we were in, when I was on the board, the, we being the Economic Development Committee at the time, we'd made a couple of modest recommendations to the board, I think, in, in, and also included the, uh, status report at the time. Um, I could try to find it, but maybe, uh, Joe or Anthony would have it in their, uh, file somewhere to be worth revisiting. You know, what was perceived a couple of years ago as, um, some modest steps to, to get a more public profile and active role for the EDC and our efforts going. Um, and, uh, and then also the, the, the charge, you know, there was a formal charge adopted for the committee years ago and that's especially when there, uh, as Chuck was describing earlier, there's some, uh, you know, committees where it's to, uh, somebody new to the process might be unclear what the, uh, what, what the lane is for a given committee versus another committee. Uh, we, we adopted one for the EDC. So that, you know, to have that kind of language in front of us, if we're going to be bringing this back for a discussion, either at one of our meetings or at a, uh, at a summit, which I think is a great idea. Uh, having that information in everybody's hands beforehand, uh, may be helpful.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Um, so next we are on the, our continuation of our public hearing regarding town-only and Man- Manchester Drive lots, U 14-101 and U 14-102.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Uh, Joe's been working extensively on this, uh, since with a request for us to convince him. So I'm going to turn it over to Joe to provide an update.
Hey, uh, thank you, Anthony. Uh, Madam Chair and the board, at the last, uh, public hearing, uh, two weeks ago, um, uh, one of the things the board discussed was that, um, uh, fairly recently in 2017 special town meeting, uh, the town had, um, worked to have town meeting consider, uh, creating or dividing off from, uh, larger parcels, uh, 4,800 square feet, uh, to then allow for that to be, uh, acquired by Butters under the, uh, Butterlots Sale Program. Um, so in researching, uh, that article and also town, uh, discussing it with town, uh, council, uh, basically we're of the opinion that it's pretty straightforward. Um, we'll work with, uh, uh, the DPW Director to just prepare an exhibit and, um, pull together a town meeting article for consider, consideration and authorization. Uh, following, uh, town meeting, then we can work with the, uh, adjacent property owner to then, uh, enter into an MOU to, uh, basically nail down, uh, the remaining details, um, and within that town meeting vote authorize, um, the Select Board to take action. Uh, the remaining land, as was discussed at the last, uh, hearing, um, the board had indicated that the remainder of, uh, lot U 14-102 and then lot U 14-101, uh, could be transferred to the care and custody of the Conservation Commission. Uh, so, um, I believe that's, uh, what the board was looking for, just for, uh, making sure that we reviewed what was done in 2017, brought that back for the board. Included in your packet was, um, uh, the article from Article 11 from 2017, as well as the exhibits identifying what had occurred. So we feel that it's a pretty straightforward and crafted, uh, motion for the board's consideration to authorize, uh, town administrator to take action to, uh, move that forward.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
That was a good summary.
Okay.
We briefly discussed the deed, a deed restriction on the area that we are going to carve off and sell. Is there any information about that?
Um, that's really up to the board. Um, so, uh, that would be something, once we start crafting, uh, memorandum of, of agreement or understanding, um, identifying what is necessary to happen, um, then at least that's something that we can go over the specifics.
Thank you.
Did want to let you, I did want to let the board know and I, uh, recognize that, uh, uh, it came in fairly late. We did get a email from, uh, from Conservation Member, uh, Don, uh, McHaver. Uh, if I'm Maciver, uh, he did just a minute ago have his hand raised. Um, so.
Uh, is he on CONSCOM or LCT?
Uh, Conservation, I thought.
Trust.
Okay. Does it, does he want to speak? See, still have his hand up?
Uh, no, he doesn't have his hand up. Um, uh, now he does. I'm sorry, it just keeps flashing back and forth. I'm just looking for him again. Uh, don't raise your hand, Don, because it
I got him, Joe. I just added him.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Don, you're muted.
Hi, can I be?
Hi, John.
Hi, um, yeah, actually I flashed it back and forth because I did hit the raise hand and apparently it wasn't apparent. It's not so easy to break through. Um, yeah, I wa, I wanted to address this, uh, not having the opportunity the last time and it sounds like you've already made up a decision, but it is a public hearing. Um, so I'm, I'm speaking for myself as someone that's been the Open Space Committee and a number of committees in town. And actually there, there were seven points, uh, simple points I'd like to make. Uh, first of all, it's good that neighbors want to clean up the lot and I think that's very positive. And we've seen this by the, uh, Morrison Orchard Area between the barn and Acton Town Land and the God Pond. In fact, neighbors have raised money and actually have done sweat equity to enhance that and clean that up. And that's town land, which, uh, was neglected, overgrown with invasive. So they did it for the community benefit. Um, and I, I should point out, I have nothing against the family. This sounds like a great family that's interested. But my concern is really the overall process and the precedent. There are other precedents. The fact was in the Open Space Committee way back, and we didn't have GIS and it took a lot of work. I did come across some tack, uh, tax foreclosure land by Oak Hill. It was Edmund Planty, um, tax foreclosure land. And I did make the case, uh, that it should be acquired. In fact, it just touches Oak Hill. Um, and it was accepted by the Selectmen, transferred to the Conservation Commission in total. And at that time, and there are some people still on the board, Joe Knox was one of them, uh, that said, this is great. We should do more of this. And we should look for more parcels that are tax foreclosure. Now, as I understand it, there are three committees that sort of weighed in a bit. Land Sales Committee, who said it shouldn't be sold. CONSCOM that says has conservation value, it certainly does. Then the Open Space Committee, which has as a rubric that if there is land adjacent to permanently protected conservation land, it should be merged together. And this is a case of that. For the Yapland, it actually took quite a bit to acquire it. Now, Cal Yap did a lot of sacrifice financially, et cetera. Uh, the state put in a land grant to acquire it. We put CPA money in to acquire it. And Sudbury Valley Trustees did a lot of work and they have the conservation restriction over it. So there's a, a lot going for this thing to transfer it in total to the Conservation Commission under care, custody and control, much like the very parallel situation of the Edmund Plantland, uh, by Oak Hill. I've, I've sent an email and you have all the, the details and citations of that. I should also point out that Littleton only has 14% of its land permanently protected for cons, conservation. That's only 14. And I think Metro West had, had a report that talked about this. The state average is 28, twice that. We have less permanently protected conservation land than any of the abutting communities. And some of them are up at 30%. So also, as it was reported recently, as through the Metro West Organization, that Littleton is the fastest developing, one of the fastest developing communities in the Commonwealth. We're the sixth fastest developing communities. And as I said, we're only at half the state average of land protected. What I propose is that we follow the precedent way back that I mentioned and we acquire those two parcels. They'd be merged into the Yapland. Already protected, you wouldn't have to do any more protection. And as a model for what was mentioned for Morrison Orchard Land, which, you know, it's town-owned land, it was neglected and grew up. Everyone rallied together and enhanced it and cleaned it up. There was conservation organizations, land stewards, town land stewards and the neighbors. And they actually put money into it quite a bit and
Let's go.
And the Conservation Trust put in $10,000, you know, for the town. So, yeah, I think it's much better to actually merge this into the Yapland and have, much like the model Morrison area, have the neighbors pulled together, clean it up for everyone's benefit. So that's my pitch.
Thank you. Um, so I believe what we're proposing is actually just to break off a piece of this and we are going to merge the land into the Yap Conservation, the remaining parcel in a quarter, correct?
Madam Chair, if I can?
Yeah.
Um, since Mr. McGwire mentioned my name, it was different circumstance, different piece of land. And what he said, I, I believe in firmly, but in a case like this, where we're breaking off, just like you said, a parcel that's 40 feet by 100 feet, a small parcel, and given the rest of conservation, I don't see any problem with that. Nor do I think we should have a deed restriction. You know, we were talking about one small parcel, uh, the, Mr. McGuire has gone through a great deal of efforts to, uh, try to clean up that area. And if it, Mr. McGuire hadn't brought it up, no one would be saying anything about that piece of property right now.
Exactly.
I have a question. Why isn't someone
Whoa, 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 through the chair, through the chair.
Through the chair, right.
Mr. McGwire?
Yeah. I mean, this is a new house and all other lots about the same size. Does that mean everyone else can acquire land? I mean, it's one thing if you had a pre-existing house that's all compliance and stuff. But this is what, four, five, six-year-old house? This is a new house. Why can't everyone share in the town-owned land?
Thank you, Mr. McGwire. Um,
Thank you.
So I believe that we, we did discuss this. We came to a consensus as a board about how to address the request for Mr. McGuire. I think it's a, a co, a great compromise. I'm going to break off what we can to, um, help him expand his yard and the rest of it will be, um, turned, are we turning the remaining piece over to Conservation or what are we doing with that? Or are we going to go through that as we draft the deed?
May I jump in, Madam Chair?
Please.
Uh, first of all, if Mr. McG, Mr. McGwire said that he was unable to get in raising his hand in the last meeting, yet he just sends us something literally during this meeting. It, it was so important to him that he sent it to us while we're in this meeting. And, and we have no opportunity to review that information. So I, it's a little disingenuous to me. Um, the fact that we, um, wouldn't even be looking at rolling this, this land into the Yapland, we're at an offer, Mr. McGuire, coming forward to Joe Knox's point. We wouldn't even be considering expanding that conservation land and bringing up the percentages that Mr. McGuire was, was throwing around. Mr. McGuire and his wife and their young family are, are looking to do something, frankly, if we decided to roll this into land, it would be at a much lower expense to the Maguires. And, and I think they would be the ultimate stewards, being the immediate of Butters. And I, I'm, I'm certain that they will, um, improve upon what right now is just a, a, a a wooded area full of bittersweet where there's no hanging going on through this area. It's completely overgrown. You can't get any tractors through this. So this would give, uh, whoever's doing the hang, I think it's Mr. Pickard, another opportunity to have access to that land if we were so inclined to clear it out and open it up. But I, I, I think that what Joe said is exactly what we should do is just, we're parsing off a piece of land, which is a benefit for one of our residents. We're doing the most, the We're doing the most, the, the best for the most. We're able to answer for one of our residents with some surplus land that we were doing nothing with. It was just laying foul. And it's, it's just giving us an opportunity to get, get, um, 4,000 square feet back onto the tax rolls and roll the rest of the land into the Yapland. So now it is on Conservation's radar so that something could be done to it. And any number of residents can go out there and then.
Madam Chair, if I can toss in my two cents worth too, and I'm keeping it with both Joe and Chuck. I mean, it, oftentimes neighbors, usually neighbors are the best stewards. And in this case, we've got a citizen initiative, uh, that is also an opportunity to the town. And it's in the spirit of everything we've always tried to achieve. And I think it would just send exactly the wrong message if we were not to, um, act affirmatively on this. Uh, what, what Mr. McGuire, uh, is, his family are proposing is, um, consistent with what our objectives are. So I, I.
Right.
I would think we should go forward.
I agree. Okay. All right, so do we want to close the public hearing?
If there's no other objection from the board, I'm happy to make a motion to that end, move that we close the hearing.
No other hands up, Joe?
No other.
I'll second that motion.
Second motion.
Okay, uh, motion to close the hearings been made and seconded. All those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Coast?
Dr. Coast is aye.
Mr. Glady?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Cindy Napoli is aye. The hearing is now closed. And so, um, do we have a motion before us now, or what's the next step in this, Mr. Layden?
Uh, there is a motion prepared.
Yeah, I've got, if, and, and I, I got the motion in front of me, Madam Chair. And to reiterate what Joe had said, as Professor Joe Layden had said in his prefatory comments, um, we have an opportunity later on in the, in the process, correct, Joe? To, uh, put any specific type of restrictions or, you know, in furtherance of some of the issues that Matthew had raised earlier. And if, you know, the board should have other thoughts, this, uh, motion would not preclude additional, um, uh, detail, correct, Joe?
Correct. Yeah, and that's where the article is just authorization. Um, yeah, that doesn't mean in the end, everything goes through. It allows us to then go and take the steps that would be necessary to implement it following authorization.
Okay.
I, I kind of concur with what Joe Knox said earlier as far as, uh, the, the, and what, uh, Mr. Mullen said at the last meeting, that, that there's zoning in place and, you know, there's, there's the setbacks that will protect the boundaries. So I, 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 I think putting a deed restriction on it is a little, little overkill. So I, I'm, I'm with Joe on that.
Look, I, I wasn't trying to advocate that. I'm just saying procedurally, uh, we still have an opportunity if that's what somebody is.
Another bite of the apple. Yep.
Okay, so, uh, with that, Madam Chair, I do have the motion that's prepared.
Please.
Okay. Uh, move that the Select Board voted to close the public hearing and authorize the town administrator to prepare an article for annual town meeting, um, seeking authorization to provide a 4,800 square foot parcel from a lot U14-102 for disposition under the abutment of lot sales program to prepare necessary agreements and documents in support of the town meeting article and the transfer, the, uh, and to transfer the remaining portion of Lot 1, uh, U14-102 and Lot U14-101 to the care and custody of the Conservation Commission and any other actions necessary there to. Obviously, proud about closing the hearing, has already, uh, been made mute.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
Chuck, DeCoste is aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glady?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. So the motion is approved, is written. Thank you. Excellent.
Happy birthday, Brendan.
Melated.
Obelated. Excellent. Okay, so next we are on to, we have a joint meeting with the Finance Committee.
Just give us a minute to pull everyone in. There, I think we got everyone.
Got everyone. Okay, excellent. Good evening.
Good evening, Cindy. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
We're well.
Good.
I think we have a quorum.
Okay, excellent. Um, so we have a presentation of the fiscal year 20 audit report. Cheryl, do you want to lead us into this or?
I'm sure, yeah, sure. Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to introduce, uh, Alina, who's here from Lansing. And Heath, I don't know if Alan is here as well. Uh, but, and you're muted, by the way, just so you know.
Good evening.
Uh, she'll be, uh, walking both boards through a presentation on our FY20 audit.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. If I can share the screen. All right, so I hope everyone can see that. I'm here to just to present brief overview of the financial statement audit results. I'll quickly mention our relationship and the reports we issued. We work with management to express an opinion on the financial statements, which is the responsibility of management. Now, the auditors can perform another test services. And the following services we have performed to the town of Littleton. It includes financial statement preparation, fund basis to governmental activities conversion, and the ongoing advisory services with management throughout the year. Uh, we can perform these as long as we document the skill, knowledge, experience with the employees of the town of Littleton that we perform these with. And I can say that all of this went well this year alone, but the financial statement audit went really well this year. So the reports that we issued are an independent auditor's report, which is an opinion on your financial statements. But as typical with financial statement audits, we do not opine on your management discussion analysis and your required supplemental information like general fund budget versus actual and pension and overtime schedules. We have issued a management letter and we'll briefly touch on it in the following slide. Uh, and we also issued the governance letter. And the governance letter is all, is just required communication. We just have to say that we didn't have any material uncorrected in the statements that, uh, we found. We, we didn't have any disagreements and there's some other required communication that we had to make. So that's why we issued that. Quick overview of the financial statements. It starts with our unmodified opinion, which just means that we didn't have to modify your financial statements to be in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. Okay, it's followed by MDNA. That is just management giving the readers an understanding of how the town was doing for that fiscal year. Following was the dual prospective financial statements section. It starts with government-wide financial stat- section, which is long-term perspective or accrual basis of accounting. Following that is the fund financial statements, which is the short-term perspective for governmental funds, which is modified accrual basis of accounting. But for enterprise funds and fiduciary funds, it remains accrual basis. After that, we just have notes. And after that, we have required supplementary information or RSI. And the audit process really involved us just obtaining audit evidence about amounts and disclosures in your financial statements. And as typical with the financial statement audits, we do not express an opinion on the effectiveness of the town's internal controls. But I did want to mention things that we do to obtain and understand it because we document that understanding of their controls and we also sample test transactions. So although internal control is a management function to safeguard assets and ensure proper financial reporting, and that's key, uh, audit procedures did include transactional testing, reconciliation testing. We did walk through the internal controls with the key employees of the town. And additionally to the town of Littleton, we do provide, uh, an additional service. We pick a department, oh, that is actually provided to us by the town, that we test on an annual basis. And overall, we do evaluate policy procedures overall. And the town of Littleton has really good, uh, comprehensive policies and procedures. This is just the slide on the rule setting agency, which is really GASB is the main one here. And the main thing that's going on right now is GASB 84. It's effective for the June 30, 2021 audits. And the good news is management already started evaluating that and is already considering account structure setup changes to be compliant with this GASB. Now to the key data, this is your general fund unassigned fund balance. It's $11,142,422 as of June 30, 2020. It's comprised of two parts, the operating fund, 8.7 million, and the general stabilization, 2.4 million. And this slide here shows how it compares to your policies. Uh, as I mentioned, they have great comprehensive policies. The one on the operating, which is, uh, the green here, the policy states that it has to be at least 5% of the total general fund budget. And you met that policy because you have 18%. And on the general stabilization, your policy says it's 5% of the total general fund budget. And that is where it's at, is at 5% per your policy. This slide here is on your general fund budget versus actual. So your revenues and other financing sources did come in in excess of budget of $850,000. You also had unspent expenditures and other finances uses of $2.7 million. So if you add those two together and subtract the use of free cash of 1.9 million, you had positive budgetary results of $1,589,881. On this slide, we'll just walk through the use of free cash because I want to find the, point out the positives here because, uh, if use of free cash is used for stabilization of capital, i- it's, uh, really seen as a, a good use of free cash. And you could see that the top three numbers here is for capital or stabilization purposes. The $433,000 that was used for operating, we'll mention a little more on, in the slide later on. There are bonds and loans payable. I wanted to mention that you had, uh, in your S and P rating report, a strong debt profile was quoted there. And it's because of percentage of general fund expenditures it, in, for debt service. Um, is one of the reasons they mentioned that you had a strong debt profile. So there is a note here at the bottom. For 2019, the debt service as a percentage of general fund expenditures was 6.2, and it pretty much remained the same. It's 6.4 for 2020 fiscal year and then June 30. The next slide is on net pension liability. There's not much for change. It's just increased slightly from 2019 to 2020. It went from $25,332,000 to $26,56,000. The following slide is on OPEP. Now, it did look like it increased. It went from $18,113,000 to $20,303,000. But the reason for this increase is primarily because of the discount rate went, went from 7.5% to 6.75%. So the decrease in discount rate does significantly increase the liability. So this is a primary factor of why OPEP went up. And this slide here is to kind of make an introduction into the management letter slide. So this is a park and recreation fund review for the past three fiscal years. And if you could see the green here, that's the transfers in that have been subsidizing the results. So you could see that particularly for fiscal year 2020, transfers in came in at $665,000. Uh, we mentioned on a previous slide that $433,000 was from use of free cash, but there was an additional transfer needed because of a COVID effect on the fund. So the transfer in was, uh, a higher than in the past for fiscal year 20, coming up at $665,000. So the first comment in management letter was the, on this. And before I even go into it, I just want to mention that there was no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses noted in the management letter. So these are what we call other matters. So the park and recreation was repeated from prior year. It's the only one that was repeated from prior year. So the other ones were resolved. The fund itself doesn't technically meet a definition of a enterprise fund, but it's presented as an enterprise fund. Uh, the GAAP definition of enterprise fund includes, uh, it to be self-sufficient. So the fund would be self-supporting to be an enterprise fund. And as we saw in the previous slide, it had a lot of subsidies. So it hasn't been self-supporting yet. And, uh, also to be an enterprise fund complicates it a little bit. Um, if the town were to revert it back to a special revenue fund, you wouldn't have to keep it on accrual basis. But enterprise fund required to be at accrual basis does have, OPEP, um, like pension, for example. We do pension, OPEP is not material enough to be allocated to here. But pension was allocated here and that was one of the additional conversion entries that had to be done to get it from, uh, modified accrual to accrual. So it just kind of complicates things and, um, so to keep it in mind for the future to think whether you want to continue that as an enterprise fund or revert it back to a special revenue fund. The second comment and the third comment, I'm just going to quickly go through because they are not as relevant right now. Um, the third co- uh, the second one for sunactivity funds, 2017 was the last year that an independent audit was done. DES requires it every third year, so 2020 would have required an independent audit. The other two can be done internally. So we just recommended that it was time to do an independent audit. And we already have a engagement letter signed, uh, right now. Uh, it just got signed this past, this last week. But the school on performing the 2020 independent sunactivity fund, um, agreed upon procedures. So that's going to happen either this April or May. And as I mentioned on the third comment, uh, we already discussed it with management. Management already has a plan to implement GASB 84. So we'll just go to the last comment. So the last comment to allocate the net pension liability among full accrual funds really relates to the fact that the, um, town contributes extra. Uh, that was a note at the net pension liability slide that, that you saw a few, uh, seconds ago. So the extra contribution actually requires extra accounting. And because the Middlesex County Retirement System lists the town of Littleton as one on their reports for GASB 67, GASB 68, there is really no accounting done as required for contributions. So the changes in contributions made. So that accounting is the same as you would do for change in proportion. Uh, but right now, the change in proportion accounting is going on, but the change in contribution is not being added. Um, because electric light department or water department, they don't have the excess contribution, but the town does. This is why this comment is here, is, uh, the town would need to hire Segal, who is the actuary for the Middlesex County Retirement System, who does the 68, 67 reports and just lists Littleton as one, uh, would have to in separately provide Littleton with a report to break it out so that extra contribution that the town makes could be accounted for properly. And that's really the end of the PowerPoint presentation. So I'll turn it back to you, Chair, and I'll, you know, let me know if there's any questions I can answer.
Great. Thank you very much, Alina.
Thank you.
So, uh, we'll start with members of the Select Board. Do we have any questions or comments about the report? Mr. Glady?
Yeah, yeah, very basic. Thank you very much. Uh, very cogent presentation both. Very cogent presentation both tonight and in written form. After many years of seeing one outfits version of this, it takes a little time to get used to the new one, just Ian Hingston, what we've been looking at for years, but it looks very thorough. I just want clarification. The March 3 letter that accompanied the version of the audit, I had references. It says we provided our findings in a separate dated data, separate letter dated March 3. I'm assuming that's the cover, that's the management letter that's inclusive with the audit. Is that, is that what was referenced or is there another letter out there I'm not finding?
If you read an independent auditor's report and it's the last paragraph in the independent auditor's report, the opinion, then that relates to the letter in the back of the financial statements, which is on compliance.
Okay, that's with the findings, okay. Yeah, all right. And just two, two general questions. Not to hold you on the spot on it too much, but given the amount of findings you have here, I just always like to ask half of the public, could you characterize in a general sense, there's always issues, whether they're ongoing issues that we're making an effort to deal with from year to year within the global structure of the town's finances and some of those under our control and some independent. Do you have a general opinion that we're within the norm or particularly one way or the other from the norm in terms of issues that need to be resolved or addressed?
I would categorize that as a year of great improvement. I would definitely categorize that in the norm. Like I said, there is no material weakness, significant deficiencies here. It's just other matters. So it's just other recommendations. So the, all those findings that came up last year, all were addressed this year with the exception of just one. So I would think that you're definitely a year of improvement and in the norm and the audit went really well.
Okay, great. And just one last, and it's a similar thing just for the record. You know, until we had issues a few years ago, not on your watch, when we have it in service of a different audit, I personally had a assumption that certain levels of oversight were taking place in the audit process, that they just weren't. No mistake, I guess, was on my end or our end for not knowing that. And we were not able to uncover except through other means, you know, some activity that was just not only wrong but criminal. And I wonder if you could speak a little bit to what is within and what is outside the scope of the audit that you folks performed for us?
So the, one of the slides that talked about internal control, talked about the audit procedures and financial statement audit. So because financial statement audit is not a fraud examination or it's not internal control, sometimes you get like SAC reports, financial controls from other entities, your vendors, that's, that's financial statement audit literally just focuses on a financial statements and not internal control of any examinations. But part of the financial statement audit does require you to obtain and understand it on internal control. And that slide that I was referring to talked about some of the procedures we do to obtain that understand internal controls. So what's within the scope of financial statement audit is walkthroughs. We walk through internal control for key areas, like we do financial reporting and closing walkthrough, we do vendor transactional cycle, walkthrough payroll, treasury, tax cycle. So there's five that, different cycles that we will go with your employees and we'll say, walk us through your procedures and we obtain some support to keep on file as an evidence that we will perform this walkthrough on an annual basis.
If I remember is correct, you rotate that randomly year to year from what you focus on or is that, if I get that correct or not?
Oh, what, you are on the right track. What we focus, rotate annually, year to year, is an additional thing that you guys put into our contract, which is a department review.
Right.
So last year it was the parks and recs. It was a different department this year. So that, that we rotate every year per the contract we have with you. And that's in addition to financial statement audit, something we do. It's out of the scope, but we have included it in our contract. What is within the scope is also sampling. So for vendor payroll, general GASP sample and the trace to support. So this was one of the things that last year when we sampled those, we had some exceptions where this year we did not come through exceptions. Now, I should probably mention the sample is pretty small. It maxes at 25 for moderate risk. But still, we had some exceptions for that for all three cycles last year, payroll, vendor and general GASP, where we did not have issues like that this year. So, and in addition to that, we just in generally review our policies and every year to see where you are at with those.
Policies, as they're written or do you follow up to see how they're implemented?
As they're written, but during that walkthrough, if there's certain areas that have to follow that policy, we make sure we document how it's followed.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from members of the select board? Okay, we'll turn it over to the finance committee.
Do any of our members have comments, questions? Anyone? I would like you to go back to the Park and Rec Enterprise Fund. That was an issue that was raised last year and is still on the radar this year. Did I hear you correctly recommending or mentioning that perhaps it should be a revenue fund instead? Or did I miss that?
Oh, let me know if you actually need me to share this slide again. But what I was referring to is it's the town adopted it as an enterprise fund, which is a self-supporting fund on accrual basis. While so far, the self-supporting hasn't happened, it's been heavily subsidized, specifically last year, it was subsidized by 665,000. So the recommendation was to reconsider that and revert it back to a special revenue fund where it's not, special revenue funds do not have the requirement to be self-supporting. You could just continue to subsidize them. Here you did through use of free cash mostly this past year, but you can continue reevaluate that and do that as a special revenue fund instead of having it as an enterprise fund where enterprise funds should be self-supporting.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anyone else from finance? That's it, Madam Chair.
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. McCray. Thank you very much, Alina, for your report.
Thank you.
We appreciate your hard work, very helpful information. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys have a great night.
Thanks you too. So next on the agenda, we have finance committee reserve fund policy discussion.
Chair, you want to walk through this, the changes that FinCom made and wanted to run by the select board?
Sure. You know, I don't know if everyone had a chance to just review the policy that I sent around. I did highlight just the tiny changes that they made. It really wasn't substantial. It was just kind of rewording some of the sections. I'm happy to go over those specific sentences if you would like, but like I said, it was really kind of wordsmithing. The part in, Ellen, you know, certainly correct me if I misspeak here, that I believe that finance committee was looking to the select board to possibly weigh in on was the section that we had bolded, which had talked about emergency transfers and, you know, whether they felt, and again, please correct me if I'm interpreting the discussion incorrectly, it would be needed to have the 48 hours and a quorum by select board, given it's a select board recommendation and whether the select board was okay with the wording as is or wanted to see that wording adjusted.
Any comments from members of the select board about that wording?
Not so much the wording there, Madam Chair, but just the, actually one of the earlier, the first highlighted area and it's consistent with the final highlighted area. I don't quibble at all with the ultimate authority to vote on reserve fund being finance committee's determination, but to even get the request to the selectman, I want to make sure the language to these finance committee, the language is clear. They're not going to be entertaining reserve fund transfer requests that haven't first gone through the selectman, at least for those entities that are under our, well, I mean, actually the budget that we recommend. So departments shouldn't independently have a path to the finance committee for reserve fund transfer that doesn't first get through the selectman. Is that how it's written, Cheryl, and what's the intent there?
I mean, and again, Ellen or others on finance committee, feel free to jump in here. I think they wanted the wording just to be more clear that the select board reviews and provides a recommendation, but the ultimate approval authority is with finance committee.
And again, I support that. That's, you know, that's current practice and that's supported by the law. I just want to make sure it wasn't left vague as to whether or not departments could say, well, we'll just go directly to the finance committee. That shouldn't be the process and I'm not sure this language is clear enough on that point.
Alan, yeah, you can, Alan, you can probably speak to that, but that was a large topic of our discussion at our meeting. That it seemed cumbersome to have both boards meet fully with a quorum and then both of us have to agree on, on it, on, on one of these requests where we decided to make it look as changed to the, every request should go through the select board for review and then to FinCom for approval. And that's the message we were trying to get. Because it seemed to be a very difficult process for what we're trying to use the reserve fund for in the past. We didn't want it to be too bureaucratic where someone with an emergency, which is what the fund is typically used for almost exclusively, wouldn't have to wait for two quorums of two boards to meet over weeks. So the wording that existed, I think, looked more like two boards had to meet in quorum to, and both give us, I guess, a blessing for the reserve fund transfer to happen. And I, I think we really wanted it to be a review of the select board to see if there were any issues with it that you had. And then, then the FinCom could take it on for final review, you know, with a quorum of four, we could meet within 48 hours.
So that's, that's a good synopsis of what we talked about, Paul. The, there was never any intent or, or to leave a loophole where a department could go directly to the FinCom with bypassing the select board since all of them worked for you in the first place. So if they have a problem, you should know about it.
Yeah, well, and you know, by the same token, you shouldn't, you shouldn't be getting any proposals before you that haven't already had some level of blessing and okay from us on an emergency basis or whatever. You know, we're, as you pointed out, Alan, the departments, especially the departments that work for us are in a greater sense than the budget that we put our name to. Emergencies come up, that's what this is here for. You folks are authorized and should be to make the ultimate determination, but the language has to be clear enough that the department understands they've got to run it up the flagpole, you know, as quick, the chain of command as quick as possible to us and we get it over to you. However that works, I just want to make sure that it's memorialized, that folks aren't to look at this as if you, even in the case of an emergency, go directly to the finance committee and, and that's where you get your determination, one way or the other. We need to maintain the, you know, management authority over the folks that are spending money under us.
Yeah, I understand totally. If you look at the document in total, I think it becomes pretty clear to any department head that, that that's the route in which they have to go. And this is the first pass at codifying something that we've done, it's a practice right along for years. And I think that the finance team is doing a good job being proactive and looking at these kinds of things. And in, just like any other policy, if we find that there's a glitch, we can always modify it.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And I just would point out something I said at the last meeting, and I think that was what prompted this joint meeting is you folks weren't necessarily involved, is that this may be the town's first stretch in codifying, but we weren't flying without guidance prior. There is state law that governs this and those are the rules we were operating on correctly for years. So I'm all, I'm all for fleshing out the process locally, but you know, it's not like we weren't following the procedure before either.
No, I know. It's, it's practical matter. We were following it that way. This just puts a lot of meat on the bones.
Yep.
So if I, if I may just comment on Paul's comment. So the way it reads, it says, although the finance committee has the ultimate authority for determining the qualifying circumstances for a transfer, department heads must submit reserve fund transfer requests to the finance and budget director, town accountant and town administrator, so that office holder can monitor the town's overall budget status and potentially offer alternative solutions. It should say then, the request then must be reviewed by the select board, subject to final approval by the finance committee. That to me makes more sense.
Yeah, there's almost too much language here, but you're correct, Madam Chair, in my view anyway, that the, a key step there is, sure, department heads ought to bring it to the finance office and then once those folks have a recommendation on it, it ought to come to us.
Exactly. And then is subject to final approval by the finance committee. I mean, it's, yeah, I think it's just some minor change in the language, just to make sure that there's no ambiguity to Paul's point.
I think, Madam Chair, I think what we were after is really any request that comes to FinCom, it's a simple question whether it's documented on a piece of paper where we can see it or whether we have to ask, has the select board reviewed this request? That's really what we're after here in a nutshell. And if they have not, then we cannot consider the approval or denial. That's kind of what we're after here, right?
The highlighted language says approval or denial will be decided by a majority vote of the finance committee members and will take into account the recommendation of the select one. But what if there isn't a recommendation?
Right.
That, then that, that answers the question though. As long as you've had a chance to review it, whether you recommend it or not, correct? It's a FinCom reserve. We would have, we would have the authority to vote on the, whether to approve it or not, obviously with debate, but the authority has to rest somewhere, correct?
Yeah, of course. And again, that's not the point and question here to me, Gary. And, you know, I stick to the language here and this, again, probably twice as much as necessary, but if a new set of eyes were looking at this, present, the present personnel, everybody on the Zoom understands what's intended here, but new people can look at this and say, okay, if there's a, if there's an emergency and then it's determined appropriate by review of the finance and budget director, town accountant, town administrator, they'll notify the select board and finance committee and then the finance committee is required to meet and vote. It doesn't say anything about what the board of selectmen is required to do or anybody's responsibility to make a case to them, just to be, that we're notified that it's happening is all that's written there.
Yeah, I think having that at the beginning, that although the finance committee has the ultimate authority, I think, I don't know that that's, needs to be in there based upon the way the rest of the paragraph reads. And it's, again, upon the way the rest of the paragraph reads, and it's, again, it's, we're not trying to change the process, I just, I just don't want there to be any questions, you know, further down the road.
Well, I
I agree with Paul's point, I think it's too, it's too, I think it could be cut back a little bit and more to the point.
Right, I mean, I'm not even looking to change current practice, current practice works.
Right.
Let's just, let's just find a way to spell it out in much plainer language.
Right, right. I mean, if you got rid of, "Although the Finance Committee has the ultimate authority for determining the qualifying circumstances for a transfer," you could get rid of all of that and just say, "Department heads must submit reserve fund transfer requests to the Finance, you know, Budget Director and Town Accountant, so that office holder can monitor the town's overall budget status, I guess, and offer alternative solutions. The request then must be reviewed by the select board, but is subject to final approval by the Finance Committee."
Yeah, reviewed by the select board for a recommendation, said recommendation would be then forwarded to the Finance Committee, at least that assures that, the notion that the recommendation's coming from the select board for, on behalf of any of the departments that work under us.
Right.
That's, that's the part that, for all the words that are there, those words are not there.
Right.
I have no objection to that.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I don't even mind, I'm happy
Still gets us to where we want to be, but to Paul's point, I agree.
I think, I think the question that was being raised, why we're having such a difficult time with that, was if it was a true emergency, and we're waiting on the select board to convene when they can't, we, can the, can the, you can review it, but you might not be able to meet as a quorum to give a recommendation, and the FinCom would, might still have to act on something, and I'm trying to think of an emergency that might be.
But how do we legally review it if we can't meet in a quorum? It's one or the other, either we are meeting or we're not meeting.
That's a problem.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have emergency capabilities to meet via Zoom on short notice without notifying the public under 48 hours expressly that, for emergency purposes, so.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, yeah. So are you saying to wordsmith this a little bit differently, like Chairman Napoli mentioned?
Yeah, I mean, in fact, I wouldn't even have a problem voting on it tonight with that, you know, understood change being, everybody's here, which is great, so I don't want to waste anybody's time, let's get the vote, and get it going, but, you know, because it's such a small change, but I think it's a significant change.
Yeah. I think I'm I've not got any objection to it, but, committee members, Tyler, you have something?
Yeah, no, it's just, Sam, I think we were, you know, we were afraid of slowing down the process, right, when we were talking about it, that's why we had made this recommendation, we weren't sure if, you know, how you all felt about it, so, I mean, this is, because that reason we wanted to have the conversation, so thank you, Paul, and Chairman.
Anyone else want to weigh in?
Alan, I agree, I, you know, I think we should make it very clear that, you know, the approval gets passed from the select board to us, and, you know, for our final approval.
Yeah, it has to, this way, it's absolutely clear that it has to go through the select board for their, for their review of the recommendation, it's fine, no problem.
If, if anything, it puts pressure on us to act.
Well, any day I can put pressure on you, Paul, I'm all for it, you know?
We like doing that, Paul.
Okay, if we have, is no other objections from Finance Committee with the changes as enunciated by Chairman Napoli, I think that will do it for us.
Okay.
I'm trusting somebody wrote them down.
I'm like scribbling right now, I'm like, wait, what did I say?
Cheryl's listening closely.
I was typing while you were talking.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah. Let's go to the table.
Thank you, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
At the risk of dragging this out a little longer, I'm afraid I have one more item. When I spoke to Chief Wazinski about this, one of his concerns was the fact that the funds didn't roll over, because the repairs and maintenance costs were very uneven from year to year. I see he's on the call, and maybe he wants to, to speak to that, and that may or may not be a significant issue, but I think that this was crafted largely because of the vehicle maintenance issues that were the, you know, the accounting that we've done in the past, so I'll leave that up to you.
I think that the, the whole purpose was so that we're not rolling over emergency maintenance money, or we're not incenting people to spend to whatever was allocated, it just, it's, it's a better fiscal policy for us to have these controls in place.
That's 100% fine, I just was, was raising that as something that he raised with me, and it may or may not be relevant to this conversation, but that's all.
It's, it's a particular circumstance, but we deal with those all the time, so.
Right, okay. All right, so.
As I say, we have a motion for us, I don't know whether the FinCom needs to make any motion as well, but, I mean, I could move, Madam Chair, that we, you know, vote to support the policy as amended.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor, select board, Mr. DeCoste?
Dr. DeCoste's aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye, the motion is made to approve the changes as recommended. Thank you.
Do I have a motion from the FinCom?
I make a motion that we accept the reserve fund transfer policy as amended.
Seconded.
All right, I have a motion in a second to accept the policy as amended. Roll call vote, Gary Wilson?
Yes.
Jerry Bertozzi?
Yes.
Tyler Gray?
Yes.
Tom Perrell?
Yes.
Betsy Bowley?
Yes.
Alan McRae is yes. Motion's approved, thank you.
Excellent, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so we are now on to item number nine, A, Senior Tax Exemption Discussion.
Madam Chair, Kathy Miller is in the waiting room, if, would you like to have her move to a panelist for this topic?
Please, yep, thank you. Hi, Kathy.
Good evening, how are you?
Good evening, good, how are you?
Very good, thank you.
Thank you for, sorry that we're running late, thank you for joining us tonight to talk about the senior tax exemption.
Okay, so
The proposed changes.
Yeah, so I wanted to talk a little bit about the senior tax exemption, because there's been a lot of concern lately, because not many seniors are meeting the requirements, and over the past four years, unfortunately, the number of applicants has gone down significantly. We had 13 people in 2018, it went down to 11 in 2019, in 2029, nine people met the requirements, and unfortunately, for fiscal year '21, we only had six seniors who met the requirements for the 41(c), so I have a short presentation, I'll try to be quick because I know it's late, and we can, let's see, share screen. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to start with what we currently have, so for the 41(c), we have the straight 41(c), and for that, the statutory amount of the exemption is 500, on the income limits to qualify, a $13,000 if you're single, $15,000 married, your whole estate, and this is minus your domicile, is $28,000, single and $30,000 married, you must be 70 years of age and have 10 years' primary residency in Massachusetts, and own your property, that should say, in Littleton for five years, unfortunately, it says Massachusetts. What we did is we, whoops, sorry, we doubled it at town meeting, so the statutory amount is the 500, but what we have is 1,000, so all the qualifying seniors for 41(c) currently are receiving 1,000. We've increased the income limits from $13,000, single, to $20,000, single, from $15,000, married, to $30,000, married. The whole estate has been increased from $28,000 to $40,000 for single, and from $30,000 to $55,000, married. We lowered the age requirement to meet this, and it's 65, and the ownership and residency stays the same, so that is what we currently have. One of the things we're going to be looking at is the two options that we currently have, that we can go to town meeting and potentially adopt. The first one is keeping 41(c), and we'd adopt 41(c), and what that does is it increases the income limits and the asset limits by the cost of living index each year. So I did a little example using just 3.3% to show that if it was $20,000 for the income and $30,000 married, if you did those by the 3.3%, you're increasing it by 660, that would be for the single, and you'd be increasing it by the 990 if married. It does the same thing to the assets, it would be, you'd be adding the 3%, the 3.3, to the income, I mean, to the assets also, and that's cumulative, so every year, you'd be adding that cost of living, so it slowly increases. The only problem with this is it does take time to get some, some kind of limits that more people would meet, it would take several years to get to a point where we'd get a lot of applicants. The next one is the 41(c) and a half, and this one is nice because it does not have an asset limit, so under this exemption, there's no asset limit, and the income is tied to the state's circuit breaker income tax credit, which is automatically adjusted each year under state law. So the current circuit breaker amount are 61,000 if single, not head of the household, 76,000 if you're the head of a household, and that was, the screen's blocking it, 90, I can't read, but
92.
92. And this exemption is between 5 and 20% of this average home value in Littleton. I did a little equation down below, just to show how I came to the amount of 93 applicants, because we wanted to see how much, it would, how many applicants we thought could qualify this, because we knew by increasing this to the circuit breaker, there'd be a lot more applicants. Unfortunately, I couldn't find many other communities that have adopted it, so what I did is use some information that we received from a, from a needs, from the 2015 Needs Assessment for COA, and we found that 103, 183 residents qualified for the circuit breaker in 2017, and I kind of just did, based on the Needs Assessment, how many of the, were homeowners, and then of those homeowners, how many were single and how many were married, and that's how I came to roughly around 93. So the only issue with this one is we, obviously, you'd be increasing quite a bit, as far as the overlay, the state reimburses up to 500 for the amount of previous people who qualified for that exemption, and so, as you know, we only had six last year, so the state would only reimburse for six of these applicants. Who's to say if there would be 93, but by increasing to these limits, we know that we're going to get quite a, you know, a significant amount more applicants that meet it. So, I'll stop sharing my screen, I mean, so that's kind of where we're at, those are the only two options we have available right now. I know Westford, Andover, Sudbury, some of them have done their own local options. I don't have much information on those. I know we've been trying to find some information for Westford and what they're going to town meeting for, but unfortunately, I wasn't able to get much information on that. So if we were to go by the two options that we have, it would be either accepting the 14(c) or going to the 41(c) and a half and using the circuit breaker. So I just thought I would put that out, I don't know if you have any questions?
Kathy, thank you for that, that's exactly what personally I think the board was looking for, so I appreciate your time putting this together, spot on, the information that we needed for purposes of this discussion, so I really, really appreciate your time working on this. I was just, I was just looking over, you know, for the town of Westford, what they did, I think what you put together is a potentially a great solution for seniors in our community, especially, we only had six qualifying previously, you know, even with your projections of 90, 90 plus, even though if those projections are off, there's still that much of a delta there, that certainly there's a lot more seniors that would benefit from the last proposal you brought forward, but I certainly would like to hear from other members of the board with their thoughts on this. As we all know, as members of the board, just being on the board and living in town, and the various committees that we've served on, we've heard over and over and over, the concern for seniors and what we can do to help them, you know, stay in their homes here in Littleton, and this is, this is just one, one facet of the solutions that we're trying to put together, so, thank you again. So I'll open it up to the board for any questions or comments to Kathy.
Madam Chair? So clarification question from me, that I think what you said was, only six qualified for the state, so only those six would be reimbursed, the 500, is that, is that accurate?
It is.
So if we did the 90, then 84 of them would be all on Littleton, and six of them would be half and half?
Exactly.
Is that right, okay?
That's correct.
Would that, would that change next year, would, would the, you know, the number that would be, that would get the 500 increase next year?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
Unfortunately, the majority, and I think that's why we were only able to find one community that adopted the 41(c) and a half, is because it's coming all out of the overlay, it's, it's very little reimbursement, other than what you previously, the amount of applicants that previously qualified.
Thank you.
Mr. Glavy?
Yeah, Kathy, thank you, you, you've qualified and identified what's a frustrating issue, but we have, we, I don't just mean the board members here, but the town as a whole has supported this effort, and it's frustrating to, to, you know, on one end of town meeting, feel good about approving the means for doing it, and then find out there's still people that aren't affected, you know, aren't positively affected by it, so, you know, unfortunately, they've been bracketed out of, out of being able to benefit. But still, if we were able to make, you know, there's a ray of hope here, if we're able to make these changes along the lines you, you know, recommend or suggest, then, one, we're able to expand the pool of people who benefit from it, two, I would also like to point out that if we take this approach, then the dollars that are used to, and correct me anytime I go astray here, which I may well do, but my understanding is the dollars that are used under this process to benefit are appropriated dollars from town meeting, as opposed to a solution that just simply shifted the tax burden via the, the property tax bill, which is different. In that case, it's, you know, it's a zero-sum game, you know, whoever benefits on one end, someone else is paying for it on the other end, right? I mean, that's, you know, part of that's philosophical, but it's very real in terms of dollars and cents at a certain level. Under this proposal, we're talking about dollars that appropriate at town meeting, nobody's taxes are specifically going up by this approach, whereas, you know, that's, that is the impact of some other solutions to this problem.
That's correct, some of the means testing and some Is it, that's correct. Some of the means testing and some of the other options unfortunately are shifting. And we're, it's a little bit more difficult when you come from a community that already shifts. So you're doing shifts within shifts.
Right.
Pretty dicey.
Yeah, begins to magnify the effect. Yeah, on, on those who are not benefiting, you know. And we have to be, I, you know, I just try to be mindful of the whole population of the town. If we can impact positively the segment we're looking to help without raising somebody else's taxes on the other end of the scale, other than, you know, obviously through the, the levy, the, you know, the uh, then, then that's the favorable approach in my mind. And, and I'm glad you've helped us understand that.
Yeah, correct. And with the 41C and a half, you have that option of anywhere between 5 and 20% of the average home value. Um, I think on the screen on the 41, if we went to the 5%, so you're getting more, you're not getting as much. So if you did the 5%, and like I said, this is all using estimates. The 93 applicants that could potentially qualify would get $431 off their tax bill. So I mean, it's not as much as the thousand that we currently have, but the current, what we currently have is only servicing six people. So unfortunately, I mean, and you can go anywhere between 5 and 20% of the average. And I, I kind of did a rough estimate. So at 5%, the minimum would be all 93 applicants getting $430 off their tax bill. And if we went up to the 20%, it would be approximately 1,700. And obviously we can go anywhere in there, but is it's kind of mostly additive, but you know what I mean? The overlay, it's, you know what I mean? Makes a difference which, if you're going from the five to the 20.
Right. And although we don't have the specifics of a proposal in front of us, the the alternative that we're aware of through legislation that, that allows us to affect the whole category by age. Uh, that does not have any means testing to it, right? So it, it hits a bigger, bigger pool prospectively in terms of a uh, re- reduction in the property tax paid by uh, senior, you know, seniors by age, but it would have to be supported by the remainder of the uh, of the uh, of the uh, tax base.
So are we referring to what Westford's doing right?
Yes, I'm sorry. I should have, I should have uh, referenced that specifically. Yes.
I don't know what they're.
What's that?
Sixty-five?
They, they lowered it to 65.
Yeah, in, in our current 41.
But it's not a means testing thing, correct? It's right across the board, is it, or is it not?
I think there is an element of that.
Is there? Okay, alright. Perhaps I should just wait to hear a, a more detailed proposal on that. But th- this is good news upfront and in my mind, what you're proposing.
And I mean, we could always look into, I mean, the interesting thing is, you know, when I was talking to Cheryl the other day is, you know, Westford hasn't ruled this out yet. So, you know, we don't even know the impact on how successful this is going to be. So we have two options that are in front of us and we can wait and see how successful this is. You know what I mean? And look into it. Cause just because we adopt one of these other options, doesn't mean that it we couldn't look into something else in the future.
Right.
That's a good point.
We, we don't even know how successful that is and what the role it's going to be like over there. So I mean, this is what we have now.
A good point. Mr. DeCoste?
I was just, with the, with the Westford one, it was um, so you had mentioned, I think 41C ties into the circuit breaker, Kathy?
Uh, 41C and a half.
C and a half, okay. Um, so that's, that's, there's is tied to the circuit breaker as well. And um, for, for residents that are paying more than 10% of their income in real estate taxes, that's another kicker. So I think those are kind of the, the, the age of 65. Um, tied to the circuit breaker. So those, those means. And then if they're paying more than 10% of their income in real estate tax, that's the uh, those are kind of the parameters under which um, they're playing under. I, I think it, to Paul's point earlier, we, we, we thought we were doing a great thing and, and trying to do more for, you know, for our most vulnerable uh, residents and seniors. And um, you know, to hear that it's, it's down to six folks that qualify, certainly something has to be done. And I know that, that it's, it's not as easy as us just waving the wand and, and, you know, we, we need to try to do it within our means. But also there are, you know, it seems like the legislature, uh, the state level is, is kind of getting the, the message as well. Where more and more communities in Osudbury and over, you mentioned them all. Um, you know, they've, they're, um, they're, they're starting to hear what we're going through. And then the, the rate at which properties are um, assessed values, as you know, are going up. And the rate at which, you know, these, these folks are trying to stay in their homes that they bought for 18 or $35,000, 50 plus year, 50 or more years ago. Now there, there, doesn't mean that's what they're paying the taxes on, they're paying the taxes on today's uh, assessed values.
Right.
Kind of, it's, it's, it's really hurting them. So yeah, anything, you appreciate all the work that you've done.
Yeah.
But I think that collaboratively with uh, you know, it's something that uh, we've all as a, as a board been pushing for, for the last couple of years. Um, and I, I, I hope that we can keep pushing and, and keep having these conversations and then trying to find ways, even if it is incremental. Iterative, you know, let's just keep taking a bite and taking a bite. And hopefully year after year, we can uh, serve more, serve more.
Yeah, I, I, I totally agree. And when I was on the phone with DOR last week and I was asking for some information, I ended up having like a half hour long conversation. And they were so shocked that I only had six people who met the requirements. They were like, you had six applicants. And I'm like, I had six. And they were in shock. And I said, you know, if it, with these income asset limits, I, I said, people in the, you know what I mean? Our era just can't meet them. It's, it's so, it's so tough to meet like 20 and 30,000 income limits or 40,000 assets and to remain a homeowner and it's, it's just so unfortunate. And so he was really great. He was like at their next department head meeting, he's bringing that up. And that they want to reach out to other communities to see how many have met these current guidelines.
Right.
Sounds, sounds like a field trip to DOR.
I'll let you.
Anthony knows his way around there, isn't that right, Anthony? You got us.
Well, I mean, I think to Kathy's point, you know, we do have an option before us. And as these other programs roll out, like Westford specifically, we can keep an eye on that. You know, we're not locked into anything, but I think if we can make a change now, um, and do something for the seniors now, I think that we, that's something I would like to see the board.
Yeah.
I move forward with if, if everybody's in agreement.
Oh yeah. If we can expand the pool along the lines of Kathy talked about, without changing uh, how, you know, the funding mechanism piece of it, if it's through an appropriate, continues to be through appropriation rather than monkeying around with the, you know, the, the, the tax levy, um, uh, apportionment, then let's do that first. And if we, if we jump from six to, what's the high, high watermark number Kathy, we might be able to achieve?
About nine, for, for the 41C and a half?
Yeah.
I'm estimating we could get somewhere as up to 93 applicants.
That's a big change for a small town. That's a lot of households.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, let's, let's, let's do that. And you know, as Chuck said, and Cindy, everyone said, Cindy said, we, we monitor, we don't, you know, fine, we do that now because it's something we can do, because we know um, what the impact will be, both positive and, you know, whatever the exposure is for us. And we learn about the other programs. And if they, if they look like they're worth doing, we're doing. If not, we do what we can when we can.
Yeah. Well, I was even thinking that with the 93 applicants at the 430, even if we said we're going to start off at the 5% because we want to see how many people apply. I'm gonna say we got half of it. You guys could, we could always vote to go up to 10% if we, 40 people apply.
Right.
You know, I'm just estimating based on a need study and kind of doing my own kind of funky math just to get an estimate, because we could only find one other town that adopted the 41C and a half. So it was really hard for me to benchmark anything.
Yeah.
Funky math. Boy, am I glad the auditors are not on this call.
It's okay, Paul. It's in a lockbox.
Great work, Kathy. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks Kathy, really appreciate it.
Okay, so I want to item nine B, enact further providing for early voting by mail.
Yes, Joe, if you can invite Diane Quarry in. So, uh, this is uh, the government signed into law. Um, uh, an act that further providing for early voting by mail. It also allowed towns of flexibility in the administration of municipal election as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. So, um, I know, uh, Madam, um, Madam Clark, is she on?
She's on.
Okay. So I think she had some uh, uh, concerns relative to where election was being held.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. How are we doing?
Good.
Alright. So um, a couple of quick things. I know that you have to um, make a vote on um, actually doing the early voting by mail, but my main concern is where we're actually going to hold the um, town election. Um, so I had a meeting with Steve Mark on Friday. And uh, I sent you all pictures of um, the middle school as well as the high school. Um, the main concern with the middle school, as you can see, um, if you look at the cafeteria picture and you see the um, tables and chairs, that's actually how the um, cafeteria is going. Um, but if you look at the cafeteria, that's how the gym is going to work. So on, on the day before the election, if we were to have it on May 8th, we would have to bring people in and actually take all those tables and chairs out of the gymnasium. And there is no place to store all those tables and chairs at the middle school. So in talking with Steve Mark, he said, um, you know, where, where, where do you want me to put all these tables and chairs? I said, that's a good question. So we talked about, if you look up the, um, so those tables and chairs are there and what we would actually be looking to have to move. So that half um, is part of them. And the other half of the gym um, is the rest of them. And that's only half of the gym, because only the other half of the gym is where the kids are actually, um, they're having their gym classes. Um, the talk is what's dividing um, the class right now from where the, they're storing their actual um, sto- uh, the chairs and the tables. I couldn't get a full picture because the classroom, classroom was um, actually being done. So I didn't want to take pictures of the kids that were in the, in the classroom. So at the high school, you have the main entrance coming in. And then if you look to the left, um, towards the, right towards the auditorium, you have the big long um, hallway. And if you look to the left, you go towards the cafeteria that, you have that long hallway. And then if you look at the gymnasium, there's nothing in there right now. They have no intention of using that for anything other than class. So we could put two precincts in the gymnasium. And then we could use the hallway going either direction for a third precinct. The idea would be to possibly have one entrance coming in and exit going out another direction. So it, it's really a matter of setting everything up in a proper um, way. We'd probably have to have two police officers, you know, outside to make sure they're coming in the right way and up away. Um, having more people working the poles that day to be sure everybody knows where they're supposed to be going. And it's just a matter of coordinating tonight, knowing that, that we're going to make that change going from instead of being at the middle school, going up to the high school and actually getting that word out as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any uh, questions or comments from the board? The town clerk?
Uh, yeah, I'll jump in. Um, Diane, what, what, what would be best for you and for, for your team?
So, I have a couple of issues. Um, the biggest thing is I really need help. Because moving it up to the high school is not just a simple moving, um, movement of just changing locations. It's a matter of moving all the booths, moving all the shields, moving all the signage, all of that has to, has to be coordinated. So hopefully we'll be able to get um, the highway department to help out. But the janitors are down, the, so the school is down by three janitors. So I can't count on them. Um, I talked to Steve, um, he said, you know, they'd help in any way they could. But they're down three janitors. They're doing all the cleanup um, every day. You know, all the people are uh, just straight out. So you know, I can't rely on them, even though he said he would help as much as possible. So that's kind of a, a no brainer. Um, so I really need extra help from somewhere else. And um, highway is really the people that help, help out, you know, for elections and moving all the um, equipment. So that's where my help is going to be and anybody outside of the highway.
So we do have the volunteer corps. Could we ask them to put out a notice and ask people if they want to help? Or does it need to be town employees?
Uh, it doesn't need to be town employees. It just needs, it's the coordinating of the, of people to help out.
Okay.
Perhaps light and water could help out.
I'm, I'm curious, um, would it be less work to do something like rent a storage trailer n- near the middle school and move the chairs and tables there? And then you wouldn't have to move all the signage?
Uh, so the for the, for the Saturday day, well, the problem is that we would have to wait till school's out for that day. And then we're in a crunch, crunch. And then we have to, that night, whatever time we're done, you know, doing all, everything we're doing that night, then we have to go outside, pull everything out of the storage, reset everything back up, wipe everything down and get it all set up, back set up for class on Monday.
So you'd have only Friday night to set up, but you'd have Sunday, all day Sunday theoretically to re- reset it.
Yeah.
But, but the Friday night would be tough.
Yeah.
Okay. So, alright, so going to the high school, talk to the highway department, maybe to Chuck's point, maybe lighten water. We can get some other people to help.
Maybe you should ask the boy scouts.
Thanks on board.
Uh, Cindy, I think your, your suggestion too of all of the above, but uh, the uh, the volunteer corps is new enough that this, it hasn't lost its energy level yet. They're still getting good responses to the, you're talking about the rotaries uh, program, correct?
Right, yeah.
They're still up, they have a good long list and uh,
They do.
People are responding.
Right. Yeah, I think Diane, we definitely can help you get plenty of help for this. Just if that's what you need, then we can, we're certainly on board to help you, but I know you said.
Usually we have a great group of seniors that used to help set up for the um, election.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, with, with the COVID, we've kind of lost that.
Right, right. Okay, so when do you need numbers by? When do you need? What's the di- what's the best way to coordinate this for you?
If I can get the numbers the week before, so I know exactly who I'm working with that day.
Okay.
We've got to break every, everything down that night and get everything back on the highway. Hopefully a highway truck.
Okay.
Back out of there.
If, if we have the bodies.
Yeah.
Is it? I have to imagine it's going to be easier for you and for your group to do it at the middle school. Not to mention the whole handicap parking thing up at the high school, trying to figure out if you can only get two precincts into the gym, then you have to put a third precinct somewhere else. That whole logistics thing. You've got it down at the middle school. So if there's a way that we can throw enough resources to you to be able to help you to get it done, it, I mean, I, I went to parochial school and, and I was never in detention on Friday afternoons, but those people that were in detention on Friday afternoons had to set up for bingo, abino, or whatever it was, depending upon the school I was in. But uh, you know, if, if you throw a lot of bodies at it, we might be able to limit, I mean, there's going to be confusion because people are going to show up at the middle school and plan on vo- voting, no matter how much effort we put into getting the word out, there's going to be those folks that just show up to middle school to vote. Um, because that's just what we do. Um, if, am, am I going down the wrong path here Diane? If, if we had enough resources to, and, and we could move all this stuff somewhere else within that building so that you're not moving the machine, the, the voting machines, which is really the thing I'm most concerned about, because they, although they're pretty rugged, they're also kind of temperamental. So if we're keeping them within the building and whether it's a storage facility outside the building or just up the, the hallway towards the cafeteria in the uh, the sixth grade hallway. Um, I, I don't know. I just, I think that with enough resources, keeping the election on May 8th Um, I, I don't know. I just, I think that with enough resources, keeping the election on May 8th at the original venue would eliminate a lot of stress for you, eliminate a lot of stress for the voter. And I, I think it, it seems like it would be the best alternative. And I think we still need all these bodies. We still need the volunteer corps. We still need light and water in the highway department. And then I, Ford to Coast Boys, I'm happy to volunteer.
So I'll be happy to do that.
But you know, i- in that scenario, a lot of people are just carrying things. Whereas you and the people that you have worked with before know how to set up the voting booths and the machines.
Right.
And that's really, you know, what takes time. So if we found a bunch of people to lug chairs around and I'm happy to help too, it seems like that would be a, a more effective, a more effective solution for you because then you would have less to do as far as, you know, moving everything to the high school seems like a bigger, a bigger time suck for you.
Yeah.
I would think at this time it would be up to Diane to finally say, which is going to be better and we just get the man file up.
Sure.
Well, I, I, I think the, I think, um, the school is concerned with us being in the school at the, at the middle school level because of them being in there in the classroom and us having to change everything because they're just getting started now with what's going on there and how they're, how they're going to be perceiving what's going, you know, they're, they're just bringing the kids back in two weeks, I think. And they're probably just going to be getting into a groove of, of the classroom being in the gymnasium. And for us to come in there and disrupt that whole mantra of what's, of the kids being used to them being in there and for us to come in there in the afternoon. I mean, I, I guess it would work, but I don't know.
Is, um, so they, they calling an audible here. If, if the kids are getting out of school on like the 17th of June.
17th of June.
Is pushing everything to Saturday, June 19th? Juneteenth, Paul's birthday? Is that, I mean, you, you eliminate the whole concerns from the, the administration with people being in their buildings. Is that even an option? Is that something we?
It's an option of moving, it's an option of moving the date. Absolutely. And then you, then it disrupts nothing. It changes nothing in the school because they're done. And then we just go about everything as usual. So it changes nothing. It changes no deadlines because the deadlines are the deadlines. Today was the deadline and last Friday was the other deadline. So that changes nothing. Um, so it would just be a matter of, um, you voting to change, uh, the election date. Tonight you would do that and we would move it to the 19th, but, um, and then all parties would remain in, in, um, office, um, until the 19th on all boards.
Yeah. Is that, I mean, to Joe's point, ultimately it's got to work best for you. And it's, you know, one of the questions I asked early on. Is that what would work best for you, do you think? It sounds like it might.
Um, I, moving the date doesn't, yeah, it doesn't, uh, bother me one way or the other. I will, I will work around the school, whatever school, um, I need to work at. Um, I just know that the, the school department would prefer their best case scenario is us waiting until school is out. Um, which I'm fine with, but I will also, if we want, if we want to go forward with the actual date of the election, which is our May 8th, I am fine with going with May 8th. I think using the high school, um, because the gym is open and we can just walk into the gym and get it set up without having to move anything. Other, I mean, I guess, you know, moving anything as far as, um, furniture, I think it would be easier to just set up in the high school because I know how to set up without moving anything. We, we can just bring everything there. And though it'll be, it'll be tough getting it up there. It'll be just as easy because you're just going to walk in, set it up without moving all of the furniture, finding a place for all the furniture. You know, having to rent something to put all the furniture in. We can just go and do it. It's just a matter of finding bodies. And the highway department, um, not for nothing, they helped me set up now. They know how to set up the booths with me. It's just a matter of coordinating with them. Light and Water Department is off on Fridays. So I don't know if that, they would be an option. So.
Well, if the gym's open.
Yeah.
And they could do it on Thursday and just move everything in on Thursday.
Yep. We could, yeah, we could do the transition of moving everything on Thursday and then set up on Friday.
Okay.
So those, those are only the two options then, right? Either the 19th, Saturday, the 19th, or moving up to high school. There's no way to get all three precincts in the gym, Diane?
It's pretty tight. It's a smaller gym. It's not as wide. So in order to get all of our, because we have, we have to have two, to, to, so be able to distance the, the tables because we have to have two tables now. The front checking in, checking out. Um, it really isn't as bad as it looks because the hallway is actually long. So that third precinct will be easier because if we can bring them in and then ship them out, they'll go in one side and out the other. It'll be easy.
Okay. Sorry. So we're going to.
Doing a PSA with LCTVA, LCTVA, LCTV.
Element of.
And, you know, really letting the residents know what's going on now. March, we got all of April.
Right. We can use the electronic signs. Yeah. We could use the solar signs to let people know.
Yeah.
All right. So we'll stick with that date then Diane and we'll just get, okay. And we'll just get you the bodies. We'll get you the help that you need.
Yeah.
Okay.
And. Did you clarify what, what, what we're agreeing to?
Moving, so moving to the high school.
Yeah.
May 8th.
Yeah.
And as far as early voting, um, no, um, in-person early voting, just by mail.
Okay.
So it's basically absentee voting has been softened.
Yeah.
The requirements.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Great. Thanks Diane.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So on to item 10A.
Take a vote on that, please.
Oh, do we need to vote?
I don't have.
Do we have a motion? It's a discussion dependent.
Yeah. Uh, do you have something to propose Anthony or should we, or should we wing it? Should we want me to wing it?
Wing it.
Wing it.
All right. Then I'll, I'll move that the board support, um, keeping the, uh, election date of May 8th, uh, with a change of location to the Littleton High School. Uh, and, uh, all other, uh, times consistent with previous vote.
And accepting the early voting.
Uh, oh, all right. And to accept the, uh, early voting, that's something we have to vote to accept, uh, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. And accepting the, uh, early voting proposal as made by the town clerk.
Second.
Excellent. Motion made in second. And all those in favor, Mr. DeCoste?
Chuck DeCoste's eye.
Mr. Knox?
Hi.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Glavy?
Yes.
That's Indianapolis is I. So the motion is approved as dictated by Sleckman.
As Wong.
Yeah. All right. Great. Excellent.
You all.
Thank you.
All right.
Tonight. Okay. So now we're on to 10A, Amazon Funds Article Language.
But just real quick, if I could just jump back to, she just jumped off, but Anthony, um, she may need additional, some additional money for signage and the, the handicap parking up there is going to be all different because you got this, depending upon where she brings people in. And so just, let's just be aware that she may need some additional resources.
Yeah, we can, we can utilize KIA's funds for that, Chuck. So.
Right. Good.
Even if required, you know, overtime or something. So.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Okay.
Are we ready now?
Yeah.
You sure Chuck?
I just one more thing. I'm like Columbo.
All right. Amazon Funds Article Language.
So Madam Chair, we just wanted to get clarification because I think it was discussed at a previous board meeting, but we, I don't, we don't have a vote on, uh, so we can craft the warrant article as to how we're, um, how the boards would like to distribute the North Bridge Host Community Agreement Funds. So from our understanding from last time, it was the 400,000 of public safety, complete streets was 350 for sidewalks, crossing light. The water department was upped, uh, from 250 to 330. And I, I think that the really, I'm not sure what the board's pleasure is with the 120. If you want to earmark that for sidewalks or something else or just let it flow to free cash.
I thought we had just decided to let it flow, but correct me if I'm wrong on that line, that line item.
I like the way I see it there, uh, keeping it technically open, but, uh, the parenthetical with the sidewalks is a nice reminder of what we talked about.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll just concentrate on the, uh, 400, 350 and 330 and, and deal with everything else another time.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay.
How did the Conservation Trust get money out of that? They're not a town entity.
Well, so I believe that's because the, there's a, they're holding the conservation restriction on the land that Amazon donated. And they were, they're going to use that to administer the restriction.
Well, that should be a, a side agreement, having pursued, uh, being in the business of suing a, uh, conservation restriction myself right now. It has nothing to do with the town's money. It's, it's between the entity, uh, getting the permit and the people holding the conservation restrictions. It, it never impacted the, I mean, I just, just went through this process. It doesn't, uh, it, it never drew on the, uh, on the town's funds. I don't know how.
Remember this Paul, it was something that Amazon offered first, eh, even before any of the other negotiations.
Okay. But the water department, I thought, wasn't it?
Water department is going to get the land for whatever use they deem appropriate.
All right. But it's, it's just a blurring of the lines. I have no problem and it's, it's really not our business other than just being aware of it. If Amazon wants to give something to the LCT, fine, but that's not part of a, a town vote budget item. It's really a, a, a side agreement. Uh, there are private, two private entities. And it may come to a public good, but it's not our place to be voting on how one private entity spends money to another private entity.
Yeah. Is this the first time we've seen that 40,000 for LCT?
No, it was on a previous.
It may, may well be, and I apologize for missing it, but the question remains the same. It would be, it's, it's really not our purview to start encouraging the blurring of that line. Uh, we, we don't have any control on either end of that exchange, how that money's going to go from one to another and nobody, uh, in, in, you know, whatever. It's good if it happens, uh, but it's not our business really.
I, I don't recall any LCT having anything to do with that, that, that land.
I believe it's in the HCA. In fact, I'm almost sure it is.
I'd rather not draft the language tonight without looking at that.
Well, yeah, that's fine Chuck, because we, we can, for the next meeting, we're hoping to do a bunch of warrant articles. So we could, um, you, you can amend it on the fly next, next meeting.
I mean, it just raises a more obvious question. If they came into it, they being Amazon, and I don't know enough about this. I apologize for that to know what their, what the process was. I know others will follow it more closely. But if they had a dollar amount of what they were going to spend on the town of Littleton to mitigate, and some of it's going to a private entity, well, then that's potentially a pot of money that did not go to another town.
Uh, right.
A town project.
Sidewalk.
Yeah. Whatever it is. I mean, I, uh, I'm just, I'm not opposed to them making, uh, arrangements with private, uh, outfit, eh, to whatever public benefit they may be, but it shouldn't come at the expense of dollars that were potentially available to, uh, specific town dollars that we control, not we control or any town entity controls. I'm upset. I, I'm with Chuck in this. I'd kind of like to know a little bit more about how that all played out and what process did that go through?
Mr. Glady has his hand raised.
Um, would you mind if I just screen, uh, share the screen for that specific item from the HCA?
I'd rather move on. Honestly. Yeah. I mean, we're not going to, I, I, I'm not going to take it as, I'm not going to make a vote tonight. If you guys want to move on with it, move on with it, but I'd rather.
The 40,000 was just for the ground purchase and demolition. So, um, but you know, totally agree with Anthony. We can, uh, have better language when we prepare an article.
It was for the what now?
Ground property.
Well, okay, but that's not spelled out there. And, and, uh, and how is that LCT?
I don't think it is. I don't, I don't.
Okay. All right. Something's wrong there. Something's wrong there. Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we'll revisit that.
We'll clean that up for the next time. We'll get some answers.
Okay. Thank you. Item 10B Personnel Bylaw and Employee Handbook Update.
So, um, just wanted to bring this back to the, to the board, uh, back, um, a month ago, we had town council with the recommendation for, uh, article for, for town meeting. Um, and, uh, also the personnel board has, uh, started to take a look at things. Um, I have a meeting coming up, uh, later this week with town council to resolve some internal questions with the employee handbook. Uh, the intent is to be able to send out the employee handbook to the board as well as the personnel board to take a look at. And that, uh, we can bring things back to the board for a discussion at the April 5th meeting.
Okay. So this is the draft of the article?
Yeah, this is what town council had prepared.
Okay.
Is this any different from the language that was proposed at the last meeting?
No, it's the same. It's the same language from town meeting, uh, from town council.
Joe just wanted to provide an update with the work that he's been doing with the personnel board.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I ask you a question relative to the personnel board?
Certainly.
Thank you. Joe, is there any discussion about, um, transitioning the personnel board?
Uh, yes, the, the personnel board has had a couple of discussions trying to identify what, um, maybe they could continue to provide a role. Um, we're going to be having a, uh, meeting coming up on the 31st, so next Wednesday, um, to sort of continue that discussion. Um, Gary Wilson, uh, Finance Committee Representative on the, uh, the Personnel Board had, um, uh, sort of presented or at least discussed, you know, sort of changing the role of the Personnel Board. Uh, but I think part of that also will be, you know, how that aligns with, uh, the select board as well. Um, but we're going to be discussing that on the 31st, uh, you know, in a little bit more detail.
Okay.
And if I could jump into, I, I was not able to attend the last Personnel Board meeting where that topic was discussed, but it was a party to earlier discussions. My personal opinion is just that it, it makes more sense to me to, to break and cut because the notion is, well, we can help out on other things later on. I think it'd be more, it, it invites, um, people losing sight of the fact that this structural change has already taken place. If we continue it in its form, it's, be easier, I, I think, to disband it so that that notion is gone and that if we have specific needs, um, we'll form another committee as necessary. I mean, I, it, it could, it's, it's not a huge deal, but I just think, uh, you know, psychologically, if nothing else, it's important to say if that, if that role has ended, then it ends as the, uh, as the bylaw amendment says.
Right.
And to, to continue it with other roles, it's kind of, it blurs it all and, uh, and not to say there aren't personnel needs out there that we won't want public, uh, citizen support on a, you know, including professionals, uh, who. on a, you know, including professionals, uh, who volunteer their time, as have been done to, to help us in the future, whether it's doing the classification studies, whatever, all that sort of stuff, I didn't, a clean break is probably uh, the best way to reset.
Yeah, I, I agree with Paul, town council is pretty specific on that when we, when we talked about this. And, you know, going through this exercise for a reason, um, and that as to Paul's point, in the future, if we do identify some needs, um, for some form of a personnel board, it's, in all likelihood, it's going to look a lot different than what it does now. Um, and that was based on a conversation that we had with town council, so I agree with Mr. Glavy's comments that there, there's got to be just a clean break, we've got a new bylaw that we're going to be proposing at town meeting, we're going to have a new employee handbook, we went through this exercise for a reason, um, and, you know, not to say that there's not going to be changes in the future, but we just, we do need to just make that clean break and move forward with the process that we've already, we've already put in place. So I don't know.
As Joe indicated, we are going to have another meeting on the 31st, and, you know, uh, I can convey that to that group then, and.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to ask, I don't know what's going on with those discussions, but I think we need to get on the same page.
Yeah, it kind of jumped up late in the game, uh, Joe and Anthony, jump in if you disagree with me, we're going to be, we weren't hearing any talk about that until, you know, the past couple of meetings, and all of a sudden, it's, well, maybe we can stick around and do this, or that, it's like, eh, geez.
Yeah.
What's the point of this?
Right.
So that wasn't the story that I was getting at, I just, just to transition, just, just to transition, because if there's, you know, just, if, if, if you just cut it off at the, if it just gets cut off on the 31st, if there was anything that was kind of in limbo, or, or anything that needed to be transitioned out, or, or worked on, and we've got a competent class hearing, a competent class, uh, study that has been being worked on for the last, I don't even know how many months, but, um, just, just wanted to make sure there was some process through which that would be transitioned out, and maybe, Paul, you and Joe, um, as the select board and, and the assistant town administrator, kind of assume whatever that.
Oh, and, and Gary too, because, you know, he has a, he has a board representation there on FinCon, but yeah, certainly, uh, you're right, uh, it would be irresponsible to let ongoing projects drop, just like that, obviously. But, uh, but if we just kept the committee alive in its current form, it invites people to say, oh, well, that didn't change, I'm going to continue to make complaints to them, or, you know, go to them with the X, Y, or Z issue, and that's, that undermines the professionalism, the professional department we tried to create with HR.
Correct.
Right, okay. All right, so we're going to revisit this on the 30.
After the 31st, yeah, 31st of the personnel board, remind me of that one, Joe.
I will.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, item 11A. Intermission. What?
Sorry, Madam Chair, this was, uh, yeah, on the last agenda, this, this was on there, and then we asked to postpone this because LCTV was still making some adjustments, they've made all the adjustments at this time, um, so we're ready for the board to accept, um, approval of the IMA with Boxborough for LCTV services.
Okay, thank you, any questions or comments from the board on this? No, they were ready for motion.
Okay, Madam Chair, uh, move that the select board vote pursuant to Mass General Act, Chapter 40, Section 4A, to authorize execution of an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Boxborough for LCTV with a term from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Nordhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
Dr. DeCoste's aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli's aye, the motion is approved as written, and we are on to item 11B, Extension to Premises for Outside Dining Service.
Aye.
Madam Chair, as the, uh, good weather's, uh, coming again, uh, we've had requests for the board to extend the outdoor, uh, outside dining services, so, uh, we're looking for the board to take a motion to that effect, um, to extend it past 60 days past the governor's emergency order, once that's lifted.
Have we ever thought about just making this permanent?
I think we need to do that with, with, maybe with water health and with, um, Mr. Mullin, just to make sure that all the, all the boxes have been checked, to make sure we do it the right way.
Okay.
But, but as a general motion, Madam Chair, I'm on board, let it be at their discretion, I mean, we, we instituted it on an emergency basis, so I think Chuck's perfectly right, that with, there's, there's health and, and, uh, and permitting things that we need to, uh, check the boxes on, but other than that, let them roll, it's been great, public likes it, and the restaurants need it, why not?
Yep.
Agreed.
Okay, excellent. All right, so we're ready for motion?
Okay, uh, then I'll move that the select board vote to extend the select board's prior approvals to extend outside seating area in accordance with A, B, C, C guidelines, 60 days past the governor's emergency COVID, uh, order is lifted.
Second. Motion's been made, and seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Nordhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
Dr. DeCoste's aye.
And Cindy Napoli's aye, the motion is approved as written, and next we are on to item 11C, Signs on the Common. Love this idea.
This, yeah, this is a request, just to, I, I guess this happened last year, um,
Yeah.
that they put signs on the common and, uh, for seniors that are graduating, so it's just a simple request to the board to authorize that, uh, those, uh, from happening again this year.
Yep, we have Timlin on the call. Who submitted the request, hi, Timlin, how are you?
I'm well, thank you for having me, yes, I'm fixing my air chug, I've been sitting here.
He's jealous.
Waiting, not falling asleep. Um, yes, so we, I was approached by many parents, um, this year again, to see if we could do signs on the common for this year's seniors. Um, I know it was a big success last year, and Anne Marie Kraus, I reached out to her and got all her information, so I wouldn't be reinventing the wheel, I'd just do it exactly how she did it. Um, like, the same, reached out to Chris at Minuteman Press, I've reached out to Dr. Harrington, um, I've spoken with, um, and I'm going to pronounce his name wrong, the librarian at the high school, Mr. Orzak, I believe it's pronounced, who does all the senior, the, um, yearbook. So, and I've reached out to many parents, because, um, to get help, so, because I'm a little busy. Um, so we're just looking to see, I've also reached out to Maureen Woods, it, for, um, the veterans, because I know that Memorial Day, seeing we're not moving graduation as of yet, we're having it June 4th. Memorial Day is, what, the 20, the 30th, or the 29th of May?
Mm-hmm.
So we were looking to maybe put them up after the Memorial Day flags come down, which I believe is June, like, May 31st, so maybe June 1st, June 2nd, and then taking them down before Flag Day, because then the flags will be up in the common again.
Mm-hmm.
So we'd get them taken down by then. Um.
A two-week window.
Yep.
Yeah, about, yeah, about 10 days, yeah, we try to get them down, I mean, I know last year, Anne Marie had them moved from the common to alumni, but I don't think we'll do that, only because it would, they'd only be there three days if we, if we did that, so, um, so I'm just looking for like, a week to 10 days to put their kids' signs up, and, um, looking for the board's approval.
Okay, excellent.
Seems like an open.
It is. All right, good.
One, just one question, are you going to reach out to Parker and Nishoba Tech and the same, because there are Littleton students who don't go to Littleton High?
Yeah, so she did, I'm not sure how she did that, yes, we are going to reach out to all Littleton graduating seniors.
Awesome.
High school seniors, not graduating seniors, but, um,
It was very, it was really m- moving, I was surprised at how, how, uh, uh, affected I was by it. Seeing all those, all those kids that I knew, growing up with my kids, it was great, so I'm happy you're doing, I'm really happy you're doing it again.
Yeah, I, I am too, because now this year I have a C, I had the bookends of last year's, because I had one graduate in 2019 in a regular year, and now I have one in this year, so I understand. So, thank you for the consideration.
You're welcome.
Well, we do have a motion, Madam Chair.
Please.
Okay, uh, move that the select board vote to authorize the use of the Littleton Common for displaying photos of Littleton resident high school graduates from June 1st, 2021 through June 14, 2021.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, all those in favor, Mr. DeCoste?
Dr. DeCoste's aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli's aye, and the motion is approved as written, thanks, Timlin, for putting this together.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
You bet, thank you.
And now we are on to item 11D, Fire Chief Scott Wodzinski Employment Contract. I think we're just looking to, um, get members of the board to work on this initiative. I don't know if there was any.
Correct, Madam Chair, his, uh, the Chief Wodzinski's contract expires June 30th, so he's looking to stop those negotiations for successor contract.
Right, so, uh, Selectman Knox and myself are working on, um, the contract with Chief Pennard. So I don't know if other members of the board are interested in working with Chief Wodzinski, or?
I've done, I've done his before, I don't know if that's good for continuity, to work with someone else on that, or whether I should step aside, let two others do it, but just.
I'd, I'd like to learn, um, so maybe you and I can do it, Paul.
I think that's, I think that's a good suggestion.
That sounds good to me, Matthew.
I've been, I've been with Scott for the last two years, I think it'd be good for, um, Paul and Matthew.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you all for doing it.
And somebody will keep us on task on that?
Matthew will.
My guess is Anthony.
Joe, we'll, we'll, we'll get you all the information, I'm sure Chief Wodzinski, I know he's in the.
He's probably watching.
He's watching right now, he's in the panel's room, and I'm sure he'll be reaching out to, uh, set up a date to meet with the two of you.
Okay.
All right, excellent, all right, great, and so next on the agenda is item 11E, Nagog Hill Orchard Authorization to Negotiate Lease.
Okay, um, thank you all, and, um, uh, I emailed you the, uh, control sheet as well as RFP, and again, uh, my apologies for, that did not, um, get included when we created the PDF. Uh, so I do have that on, on screen, if you don't have it, um, basically, uh, just to give you an update, uh, we published uh, an advertisement for, uh, seeking requests for, uh, proposals for the orchard. Uh, the RFP was published, uh, January 19th and 26th, editions of the Lowell Sun. It was also published, uh, posted on the Central Register on January 20th. Uh, the due date was February 19th, um, we only got one proposal, uh, in response to that RFP, uh, from Nagog Hill uh, Farm LLC. Uh, staff as well as town council has reviewed the, uh, proposal and, uh, recommended, uh, moving forward to negotiate a lease and finalize terms. Um, there's, uh, uh, you know, some objectives that the town had as far as, uh, negotiating the lease, and, and, and uh, talking to town council as we prepare final documents, uh, for, uh, the, the contract for the lease, that would be a great opportunity to then include that, um, to cement some of the goals, uh, that the board have as, as far as, um, reporting, um, making sure that, uh, best management practice was, practices were taken care of, as well as pest management.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I might add just a little more context?
Sure.
Yep, first of all, kudos to, uh, Joe, he's been the consistent, uh, uh, factor here since last summer in working with this, we, um, if you will recall, in the fall, when we put the RFP together, we achieved in that document most of what we were looking to get in terms of, uh, accountabilities on succession, on access, uh, on, um, on, um, production and, and, and reporting to us, as well as, uh, addressing issues that the, the current, uh, leaseholders uh, have, uh, mentioned, which speak right to our own asset value there, with the, uh, capital replacement and repairs and all that stuff that needed to get done, uh, it's not a shock that the same entity, uh, or, uh, family entity that's, that's running it for the past 30 years are the only uh, applicants, it was open to others, uh, we didn't make it restrictive in it in any way, uh, in our, um, in our RFP, but there's good news in the response, in that we have prospectively two generations of successors uh, outlined, uh, which was more than was expected, uh, Mark, um, Auger, uh, son of Charles Auger principally, but also his wife and son as well, and they've got a number of ideas, um, the response, yeah, I, you know, Joe will step in and correct me if I go astray here, but council's advice is, um, based on the RFP we sent out, uh, the recommendation is to approve, correct, Joe, some, subject to successful negotiation of the contract, uh, the, um, RFP, or award the RFP subject to successful negotiation of the contract, and that's where the, uh, the details will be ironed out, any that weren't addressed in their response, uh, you know, we're going to, we're going to hold any, as we would hold any, um, respondent, um, accountable to the terms that we put out the RFP, if it's not there in their response, then it will be there in the contract that we bring back to the board.
So, and, and Paul's entirely right, uh, so the board will, uh, have another review, uh, prior to finalizing of the language and conditions, that would, uh, then be part of that lease, uh, uh, contract.
Okay, thank you.
But, it's, it's, it's good news, uh, I mean, the.
That's awesome, it's really good news, I mean, from where we were a few years ago on this, that's great, it's huge news, so, good work.
Is the, the length of, is the length of that lease typical, 20 years with a 10-year option?
It's kind of the outer bombs, right, Joe, I mean, it's about as far out as we could go.
Yeah.
Um, it's kind of what they wanted, and, and, you know, it's, you know, I don't want to hash this, the debate out in public, but it's a good, it's a good line of questioning, Matthew, we should follow that through, but they, they wanted as much, uh, security as possible, and there's some interest in the town doing it the same way. Um, but there's also, we've talked about, uh, outs at much shorter intervals, correct, Joe?
Yeah.
Right, so there's, it's.
That's, that's good enough, yeah, thank you.
It, it, look, think of it as like a, uh, NFL wide receiver contract that says 10 years at, uh, you know, 10 million bucks a year, right? And you can get cut in training camp, right?
We're getting married, or what?
Right, right. Um,
Right.
Uh, yeah, uh, uh, be- because it's a contractual, uh, negotiated thing, I'd, I'd, I'd rather get into some more of the fine details there offline until we get something negotiated with them.
Okay. All right, great, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay.
Is there a motion, Joe, because if there's a motion, I don't have it in front of me. There we go. All right, I'll squint, I have new glasses, but, uh, still at the distance. I'll move that the board vote to authorize the town administrator to negotiate a lease agreement with Mark Auger, President of Nagog Hill Farm LLC, to review and approve, uh, for review and approval by the select board at a future meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, all those in favor, Mr. DeCoste?
Dr. DeCoste's aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Cindy Napoli's aye, the motion is approved as written, and now we are on to meeting minutes from March 8th, 2021, did the board have any, um, suggestion, changes to those minutes?
None.
Okay, ready for motion?
Okay, yeah, without, I, I think I know this motion, but I don't have it in front of me, I'll move approval of the minutes of the, uh, the March 8th, uh, meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, all those in favor, Mr. DeCoste? Mr. Nordhaus?
Yep.
Dr. DeCoste's aye.
And I am too.
Great, thank you, Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Cindy Napoli's aye, the meeting minutes of March 8th are approved as written, and now that concludes the select board meeting for this evening, when is our next meeting, we're back on March?
April 5th.
April 5th, yeah.
My bad. All right, so the select board will be back on April 5th? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, good meeting today, a lot of.
Second.
Lots, lots going on.
Yeah, that was a motion I was kind of making there.
Oh. Motion to adjourn's been made, and seconded, all those in favor, Mr. DeCoste?
Dr. DeCoste's aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Matthew Nordhaus is aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Oh, Glavy and Goldie Boy, who wants to go to.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye, that.